Okay, we're hot. All right, we're opening the public session portion of the meeting. We started the evening tonight in executive session where the board discussed strategies with respect to collective bargaining updates by town manager relative police, fire and dispatch, strategy with respect to litigation with respect to N-Star, EverSource, and we also conducted strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel relative to the town manager. I'd like to start the meeting as we always do with public session, public forum, residents are invited to share ideas, opinions, or ask questions regarding town government. Do we have any takers this evening? Okay, seeing no brave souls in the audience, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. And we are going to do the following. Item one, minutes, the board will consider accepting the public session minutes of July 29th, 2015. Two is a parade permit, the board will consider approving the following parade permit for the Michael Lisnar Respite Center, 18th Annual Michael's 5K starting at the Town Common, ending at the Town Common on Saturday, October 17th, 2015, no street closings. Third is a gift, the board will accept the following gifts to the town, $50 donation in memory of Mrs. Irene Riley from Maureen Creashe, and a $75 donation from Susan Gould to the Hopington Ambulance Fund, a $5 anonymous gift to the Veterans Celebration Committee received in memory of Ray Draw, and $72,500 in sponsorship gifts for the purposes of the town's 300th anniversary celebration. Third is Central Mass Regional Stormwater Coalition, IMA. The board will consider reauthorizing an intermunicipal agreement with the Town of Spencer and 30 other communities to assist with NPDES MS4 compliance. The cost to the town will be $4,000 to implement. Fifth is a resignation, the board will accept the resignation of Marie Eldridge from the Permanent Building Committee effective August 6th, 2015. Sixth is a street naming change approval, the board will consider request from Crosswinds LLC to change the street name of the Hayden Woods subdivision from Buckland Lane to Davenport Lane. And seven, Rockwood Meadows Conservation Restriction, the board will consider approving a conservation restriction of 25.87 acres off of School Street to be granted to the Hopkin Town Area Land Trust. Would anyone like to break anything out?
Mr. Chair, the items specific to the gifts for the 300th celebration, please.
Okay, so item three will break out.
Jamie.
Item five, good one to break out, anything else? Okay, the board will, or the chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items three and five. Motion second for the discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, present not voting, that's unanimous. Item three, Mr. Herr.
I think it would be appropriate to read the list of the donations that were given for the 300th anniversary, if that's okay.
I would be thrilled if you would.
Blackstone Valley Wealth Management contributed $500, Carboni's Restaurant contributed $500, CVS contributed $5,000, CrossPoint contributed $1,000, EMC contributed $15,000, E.L. Harvey contributed $2,050, that might be $2,500, Faith Community Church contributed $2,500, Gassett Building contributed $1,000, Gorman Richardson Lewis Architects contributed $1,000, the Hopkin Town Independent contributed $1,000, Legacy Farm contributed $5,000, the Marathon Fund Committee contributed $5,000, McIntyre Loam contributed $1,500, Metro West YMCA contributed $1,000, the Middlesex Savings Bank contributed $1,000, Merrick O'Connell contributed $1,000, the New England Money Handling Organization contributed $1,000, Perkins Elmer contributed $5,000, Paul Phipps Insurance contributed $5,000, Scott's Landscaping contributed $2,500, Select Energy Development contributed $2,500, and the Richmond Group contributed $1,000, Webster First Credit Union contributed $1,000, and Weston Nurseries contributed $500.
Thank you for reading that, and thanks to all those folks for their generous gifts.
Yeah, those were great gifts.
Any other comments, Mr. Herr?
No, thank you.
Okay, so unless there's any other questions, anything else on item three? Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve item three of the consent agenda, the gifts.
So moved.
Motion second for the discussion.
Mr. Chair, will there be letters going out to these organizations?
Yes, there always are. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, present not voting, that's unanimous. Item five, resignation, Mr. Sostari, I guess you got to it first.
Yeah, you know, I just want to thank Marie for all of her contributions over the years to the town, and I know that there was a little send-off recently, I wasn't able to attend it for Marie and Ron. The two of them have contributed incredibly over the years to the town, but, well, you know, I was going to say that oftentimes maybe Marie is a little bit in the shadow of Ron's contributions and accomplishments, but I can't say that because she clearly has a spotlight of her own, and I'd just like to personally thank both of them for the help that they've given me personally over the years, but most importantly for the help and the contributions that they've made to the town.
Thank you for that.
Todd put it very eloquently, I just want to make sure that we always thank people that dedicate so much of their time to the town and making it a better place to live, much better than when they came in as now that they're putting their time in.
Okay, yeah, they lived here for 37 years, and Friday, I actually did go to the game with nice set of the marathon, the 300th anniversary prints, I guess is what they are framed set, so they do have something to hang on their wall down in South Carolina. Any comments?
Nope, all set, thanks.
Their kids must have just graduated high school.
Oh, no. They're long gone.
They've been long gone.
Okay, so with that, the chair will entertain a motion to approve item five, the resignation of Marie Eldridge from the Permanent Building Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, present not voting, that's unanimous. Okay, item four on the agenda, Nine Church Street, Grift of Land, an action item. The board will consider accepting a gift of land for Nine Church Street for the town's Library of Renovation and Expansion Project. So let me just start off with a little setup. So people who don't know, until a couple of years ago now, the library was actually a privately owned enterprise. It was a building owned by a group of trustees who had control of it, and they let the town use it as a library, basically. But several, many years ago now, and I think Sarah will tell us how long ago it was, in a very thoughtful move, they acquired the land up the street on Church Street, which is a triple-decker building, in the thought that someday the library might want to expand, and this could provide a possible avenue or pathway to do it. So it was a remarkably forward-looking decision, and for all these years, this group has kept this building, has rented it out, but has always had in mind it would be used eventually for the library, and several years ago now, they actually struck an agreement with the town that once the new library building was, once the town took control of the library building, which it did a few years back, and once the town decided to build a new library, they would donate the building free and clear to the town. So this is an agreement that was done three or four years ago now, and the time, and I'm sure they thought it might never come, has now come when all this has come to pass, and we're getting ready to start the library building, and so now they're coming in this evening to gift to the town officially the land and the building on it so that we may make use of that for the new coming library. So with that, let me turn it over to, you know, if it's you or, yeah, okay, so there you go, please, up to the podium and tell me what I got wrong.
Well, it was in 2000, the trustees, before Lynn Holden and Sarah and myself, or even on the board, they purchased Nine Church Street for that exemption to expand the library, which they thought was probably going to happen in four or five years. And here we are in 2015, and so excited that there will be groundbreaking issues. So it did take 15 years, through lots of tenants, which was a bit thick, 30-something years. We'd love to provide the town with that capability to now move forward and build some new libraries.
Thank you. Okay, is it signed by you? Do you have to sign it over?
Also.
No, to us.
Okay, and town council is good with it, right, obviously?
Good.
Okay, good. So the motion, the job now for the board, I guess, is to vote to accept the gift. And Tom, do we need to, we don't need to do anything with the deed tonight, right? Or do we, okay. Sarah Lynn, anything to say, to add to?
Tony wants to.
Oh, please, yes, sir, please.
As a private citizen, this is true in a market world, but I'd like to lend these words. Hopkin Town is blessed with so many citizens who care deeply about our well-being, about community. Over the past several years, I've had the opportunity and privilege to witness at close range the volunteerism by certain individuals who spend vast amounts of personal time as trustees of our public library. This gift bestowed tonight represents the extraordinary efforts of these volunteers, and I wish to thank them personally for their foresight to purchase this land, their selfless acts to maintain the property for so many years at no cost to the town or to the library, and lastly, for their community spirit in providing this valuable piece, which is critical to Hopkin Town's library expansion. So to Lenny, Linda, Sarah, the current directors, board, and all those trustees that came before you, a job truly well done, and I'm certain our community is determined to create more. Thank you.
Are you good? Okay, all right, so without further ado, and with deep thanks to the three of you and all the other folks who did this along the way, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the gift of land of Nine Church Street for the town's Library of Renovation and Expansion Project.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion second, do we have any further discussion?
Do we want to add in the deeds book number to the motion? Do we need to add the deeds book number to the motion?
If we had the book and page number.
We do.
I've got it at deeds book 33452, page number 211.
Do we want the rest of this too? Pursuant to the purchase and sale agreement dated January 25th, 2011, the town meeting voted on Article 50 of the May 4th, 2010 annual town meeting. Why not? Okay, so that's in the motion?
So that's the motion.
We're good? Motion second still, we're good? Okay, all right, you're good with that?
It wasn't spontaneous enough, but I'll take it.
Exactly. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, present not voting, that passes unanimously. Thank you all again.
Great job.
All right.
Thank you.
I think that was a landmark moment that just went.
I know, that's right, I was going to, I wanted to read the whole thing because it was, it's a big thing.
It's huge, it's huge. They did a great job getting this there. Okay, next item, tonight's fun, a proclamation. The board will consider approving a proclamation for Eagle Scout Gregory Reiman from Troop 18 in Milford. So the Reimans are repeat visitors here to the Board of Selectmen for Eagle Scouts, congratulations to you again. Let me start by, Cheryl, ask, we'll entertain a motion to approve the issuance of this proclamation to Gregory Reiman. Can I get a motion for that, to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, present not voting, that's unanimous. Okay, so with that, with that stuff out of the way, can I invite you up and your parents up and the like and introduce yourself, tell us why you're here, what you did, board will ask you some questions, short quiz, and then we'll get going. Okay?
I'll be taking notes.
Exactly.
So my name's Greg Ryan. My Eagle project was to work for the Greyhound Friends Shelter in Hopkin Town, Massachusetts, and I built a storage shed for them, and it was a two-part process. It started with me raising money in order to buy the supplies for the shed. I raised about $1,500 through canned donations, donated sales, donated yard sales, and working at the Greyhound Friends Shelter to get donations from people, and then after raising that money, we, over the summer, organized scouts in my Boy Scout troop and other volunteers to help build the shed. That was it, yeah.
That's terrific. All right, well, congratulations on the big achievement. Let me go to the board and ask if anybody has any questions or comments, Mr. Herr.
How long did it take from start to finish?
I officially started the project in March, and then I finished in March, so it took about a year the whole time, yeah.
About a year.
It was, construction was done by the end of August after that March.
And how many people were involved in it with you? I think you might have mentioned it, but how many total?
Probably about 25 people total, so, and my job as the Eagle Scout was not to do everything, it was to organize many people, so sometimes I would ask people to help me with things, or ask them to help me work with the construction because I've never built a shed before, so.
That's great, that's great. So this is my briefcase here, and I carry with me a lot of places where I go, and in my briefcase, believe it or not, amongst other things, I have, some will laugh at this, my resume, and I've always had a written resume with me in my briefcase my entire career. I've only had one job for 30 years, but I've always had a resume in case they threw me out. I've tried to get some other jobs, but haven't quite pulled that off just yet, but I carry, I handed out a lot last year, I carry a resume with me. One thing that's missing on my resume, that you will get to put on your resume and carry with you the rest of your life, is that you're an Eagle Scout, and that is an awesome thing. It's really awesome, and it's missing on mine, I'm jealous that it's going to be on yours, I'm thrilled that it's going to be on yours, and I congratulate you for a job well done.
Thank you.
That's great, and if you want to share your resume with me someday, I'll be happy to circle it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herr. Mr. Motion.
What was your biggest challenge?
Well, both of my older brothers are Eagle Scouts themselves, and so from the age of 11, I've been watching them go through this whole experience themselves, and I got to watch them turn from what I saw as, you know, my older brother being, you know, 11-years-old themselves, to the so-called adults that completed their own Eagle projects. But there was no magic moment where you become an adult, there's no moment where you, in the completion of your project, realize that, oh, yeah, I can do this. There's also, there's always that constant feeling of, oh, man, what if I mess up, what if I waste all these supplies because I've never built a shed before, and so just getting over that first fact of me not realizing that I can do this, it's totally doable, was one of the biggest challenges, at least, the one that comes to mind.
Great experience.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mr. Cutino.
Yeah, are there any companies that you want to put out, or sponsors, or people that you want to put a shout-out to that may have helped you with donations or that?
First and foremost, I would like to thank the Greyhound Friends because they put in a lot of work and were very, very helpful with me when I worked with the project, and secondly, I ordered all of my materials from Coopman Lumber in Whitemsville, and they were willing to give me a small discount on their supplies in order so that, and that helped me in the end be able to pay for the whole of the shed.
Excellent, excellent. Yeah, no, I think that what you were just saying, you don't know when the actual moment is, you know, and the great thing about, this is, this is, this was always my favorite thing, this and the Girl Scouts with the gold medals and everything else, this is just the best thing for us on this job that we have here, and, but when you were just talking about the actual point, and this is why it's going to help you in the future, is that you've already, you know, done the organization to raise the money, and then you had to come up with the plans, and then, you know, the building time of, you know, six or eight months to get it completed, you know, you're going to use those skills for the rest of your life, and the benefit that you have by being an Eagle Scout is that you've done it, you know, sometimes years earlier than the person that's going to take, go to business school and everything else, and then just try and use the knowledge that they picked up in school, but never have done it on a practical basis. So it's something to be incredibly proud of, that, you know, and the whole family, what your parents, it must be beaming, this three in one family, awesome, just a great thing, congratulations, great job.
Over to Mr. Sostari.
Greg, congratulations. The rest of my fellow board members cherry-picked the questions here, but it is, it is, you know, we can't state enough that it's an incredible accomplishment, and, you know, I know one of the things that I bring up, you know, every couple of times we get an Eagle Scout through here, which Hopkin Town, in my estimation, has an incredible number of Eagle Scouts that actually get, they fulfill that achievement, just the actual number across the country as a percentage of scouts is incredibly low, and the number that we get coming through the doors here in Hopkin Town is really quite impressive, and I think that, and that's not to diminish the accomplishment here, it's to say that we've clearly got a population of outstanding young men such as yourself, and people who strive for excellence, so, you know, we certainly count you in that group for whatever that's worth, but congratulations and good luck as you move forward.
So the part that stuck with me the most was, I've got one Eagle Scout, another one was on his waist, and my youngest is sort of right, you know, a couple of years behind you, so I feel the pressure you must have, must have had on you as you went through this whole process, so congratulations for not cracking, I think it's toughest on the youngest, so, so I'm very, it's great, it's very well done. Anthony else, parents, Anthony to say, anybody? Sir, yes.
Thank you. I currently serve as the Scout Master for Troop 18, and served so for a couple of years, in total as Assistant Scout Master, Chairman, that sort of thing, I think I've been with the Troop eight years, and now I get to retire because my youngest son is aging out. But Greg was the 85th Eagle Scout from Troop 18, so over 69 years, 85 Eagle Scouts. Every single one of those Eagle projects is an opportunity that was created by someone who allowed the project to happen, encouraged the scouts, and often the scouts need a building permit. A lot of times, these projects happen on public land, I've done a couple of Eagle projects with Scouts that are on state parkland, for example, and it's great fun to bring the scouts into the building, you know, the building committee, or to get a permit or something like that. The town staff are wonderful at accommodating the scouts and educating them, and as Scout Master for the Troop, I really appreciate it, and I'd like to thank the town on behalf of the Troop. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. Okay, so without further ado, the board would like to present you with the proclamation. Let me read this, and then we'd like to give it to you and maybe get a picture if we can. The Town of Hopkin Town, Hopkin Town Board of Selectmen hereby recognizes Eagle Scout recipient Gregory Reiman, Boy Scout Troop 18, Milford, Mass, Boy Scouts of America. Therefore, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Hopkin Town, Massachusetts, join with Gregory's family and friends in recognition of his achievement in attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Signed under our hidden seal this 11th day of August, 2015, Benjamin Pollock Chair, John Cutino Vice Chair, Todd Sostari, John Moser, Brian Herr. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thanks, Jeff, congratulations.
Great job.
And because we got to do it for your brother, we got to do it for you too now, so you got a picture, we're going to have all the family photographs look the same.
Well, they're different us.
We'll Photoshop you.
A couple more. Thank you.
Yeah, I feel for you. How much longer? Okay, not so bad. Okay, next item on the agenda, staff appointments, an action item. The board will consider confirming the following town manager staff appointments, Christina Boyan as the town's new payroll manager, and Susan Stewart as the volunteer coordinator at the senior center. Mr. Kamala, over to you.
I would be honored and pleasure to introduce Christine as the town's new payroll manager. I think it's important that first I acknowledge the great work by the hiring committee in presenting Christine to the town manager as the recommended finalist candidate for this position. The interview panel included Maria Casey, Chris Howell, Maureen Dinnell, and at a later stage, myself. In our decision to present Christine, we considered the following issues. What was, what is the value add? It was our assessment that this is a very important position in town, considering that our payroll is currently, this is the combined school and town payroll, is currently at $39.7 million. That is approximately 42.5% of the total expenditures, and by the way, this does not include benefits. So we have an individual who's qualified to help us improve our processes, our information flow with regard to approximately 42.5% of the taxpayers' money. We also consider Christine's experience working in the accounting field. We believe we have an opportunity to improve our accounting capabilities, this is very important given the town's focus and priority on budget issues. context, done some great work in the treasurer collection processes, and in that regard will strengthen our treasurer collection functions in the office. She is working currently towards a certified general accountant certification. This is through the Mass Municipal Auditors and Accountants Association. Is an accomplished accounting professional with experience in municipal government. She was in fact recognized by the Department of Revenue Director, Jerry Perry, for the best data submission for her work on Tonton's FY14 recap. This is a process that we in town has identified as an area that we need to improve upon. And so we're glad to have somebody who has expertise and has been acknowledged by the Department of Revenue Services as an expert in that area. Most importantly, and this also stood out during our interview process, she currently is the deputy auditor in Tonton, is part of the process of transitioning their financial software package. And that was an attraction to us in two ways. Her experience in transitioning financial software packages, but most importantly, she's also been part of the process of transitioning payroll from being outsourced into an in-house process. Her experience, she was, she is currently the acting city auditor for the town of Tonton, or city of Tonton, sorry. She also has worked as a head bookkeeper for the Bellingham Public Schools. You'll recall that the town has spent, I think, the last eight months working on finding ways to better coordinate and administer our payroll process for both town and schools. So somebody who has worked on the, on the school side is a great asset in that regard. Her references were spectacular. We were told that she does understand accounting controls. She's a quick learner, conscientious, and diligent. She's able to form great working relationships even with difficulty or unsatisfactory customers. She has the ability to solve important matters when difficult situations arise. She's also very knowledgeable, cooperative, is a hard worker. And to quote Dominique Copla, who was the CPA for Tonton, she, he told us that she has a lot of respect for her. She's an excellent colleague. And his wish was that she become Tonton's next city auditor. Fortunately, she's coming to work for Hopkinton now. And again, process followed is similar to the process that we followed in all our hirings. And we are very excited to present Christine to the board tonight.
Christina, welcome.
Hi, thank you.
Very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
Would you like to take, I mean, I think you got a fairly fulsome introduction there, but, but, so, thank goodness you already negotiated your contract. But, yeah, would you, would you like to introduce yourself briefly to the board and allow us to folks to ask questions?
Sure, sure. Well, obviously, my name's Christina Boyen. I have recently, well, I'm now obviously coming here, but I had worked for the city of Tonton for the past five and a half years. Prior to that, I had worked for the Town of Bellingham for almost nine years. I left the Town of Bellingham just because I relocated to New Bedford, Massachusetts. I had lived there for five years and wanted to find a job closer to home. And the city of Tonton had hired me to be their assistant city auditor. While I was there, the city auditor had to go out on medical leave. And without question, the mayor appointed me as acting city auditor. I did that for almost six months that I had done that. And in that time, we had done the balance sheet, the recap, and filed Schedule A. And Jerry Perry, the director of accounts, had sent an email out, if anybody knows Jerry Perry, he doesn't do that that often, so it was nice to be recognized by the DOR for that accomplishment. And, you know, for him to say that it was the best that he had seen in Tonton in quite some time, so, and I take a lot of pride in that, and I take a lot of pride in my work, so. And then after I had interviewed here, I, you know, I really feel like Hopkinton would be a great fit for me, so here I am.
Wonderful. All right. Well, we're very happy you're here.
Thanks.
Starting off, Mrs. Sistari, comments, questions?
Where have you been all our fiscal year? Sounds like you do have some great accomplishments. And congratulations on, on the recognition that you've gotten. We welcome you here to town. I hope you know that we're counting on you. And, no, but just good luck.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Cutino.
Yeah, I don't want to use that same line, counting on you. That's poor. That was terrible. No, but thank you very much for, for choosing us. After listening to the, your recommendations and, and all, I, I feel honored that you joined us. And thank you, because we, we, we're a town that's, that's growing now. We're in, we're at a crossroads and we're, we're transitioning constantly. And it'd be great to have somebody that has such a great solid footing. So thank you for coming.
Yeah, I'm excited. I'm really excited to see what I can bring here, so looking forward to it.
Mr. Moser.
We have some great experience on your resume. Just looking through some of the things, it just, it just all adds up. I notice you're working towards a GCA certification. Glad to see you're doing that. So proud to have you here.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Herr, any puns left you that haven't been used?
Well, these guys said it all. I always have a couple of sort of questions to care with me on some of this, some of this not for you. Go through this process with every hire, for whatever reason. They get annoyed, but they'll get over it. So this is budgeted?
Yes, the position is budgeted.
Excellent. And who does the, where does, where will Christina, who, who will she report to?
To the finance director.
Who reports to?
The town manager.
Great. Okay. That's it. Excellent. Welcome to Hopkinton.
Thank you very much.
Based on what I see on your resume and what I'm hearing about references and so forth, it's a great fit and we're lucky to have you.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, and I say the same thing. Your references are very terrific. Your background's phenomenal. I think we're all very excited to have you here, so.
Thank you.
No divided sentiments here.
All right, then. On that note, the chair will entertain a motion to confirm Christina Boyen as the town's new payroll manager.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second for discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, is president not voting? What did I do wrong, Mr. Kamala? Okay, that passes unanimously. Welcome, you're officially confirmed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in tonight.
Good luck.
Good luck, Christina.
Okay, next up, we have Susan Stewart, who's proposed as the volunteer coordinator at the senior center. Mr. Kamala, again.
Yes, first off, again, let me thank the HR department, HR Director Maria Casey, Jessica Lawrence, Human Resources Generalist, who are truly sharpening the hiring process. Officer Phil Powers, he participated, as well as Cindy Chansmore. This is, this is an exciting moment for, for me, given the fact that in my prior life, I, I did work with volunteers who were assisting seniors. And I, I therefore understand what you bring to the table and the value that you add to the senior center. Significant experience is pretty evident from the information I gathered from the interview team as well as your resume. 23 years caring ministry volunteer for Woodville Baptist Church. Five years at the senior center as a friendly visitor program. Past five years working at Salmon Health and Retirement Training and supervising volunteers on a variety of responsibilities. I, I can tell you, having worked with Cindy, she's always looking for people who love and care for seniors, but most importantly, people who will assist in enhancing our service delivery. Volunteers play a key role in, in, in that respect. You also worked for the Framingham Orthopedic Associates. I think that's, that's important. I've seen a lot of medical related programs that are coming through the senior center. You're also a Hopkinton resident. We appreciate your, your service. You've, you confirmed during the interview process your passion for volunteerism. Volunteerism makes our jobs and our lives here in Hopkinton much easier. The references revealed that you absolutely have the qualities to perform as a volunteer coordinator. You have the strength that confirm your kindness, your patience, compassion, initiative, and you're driven. We were also told you are a very good, active listener. You are now going to be the go-to person regarding our volunteer activities. We also learned from your references that you do things with ease. So we, we appreciate that and we're looking forward to, to you joining the senior center team. The pastor at Woodville Baptist Church commented that you love your town, you love your seniors. And clearly, this is a win-win position for you as well as the community. Honored to present Susan to the board.
All right. He's really been working on these for a while. It sounds like he comes back from vacation, is all. Susan, welcome. Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Very nice to meet you. Would you care to introduce yourself also to the board?
Sure. Susan Stewart. And I'm really looking forward to this position. I do have a, a heart for seniors and I'm looking forward to helping the senior center bring in volunteers, because as I was there last week, I can see it runs smoothly and it's, it's, I hope to continue to have it that way.
Wonderful. All right, so let's just go to the board. Any questions? Mr. Moser.
It's just great to see you volunteering. You've got terrific experience. Keep an eye on the pool table, especially if they get another one in. But I can tell you love your work, so congratulations and thank you.
Mr. Herr.
I think it's a great fit. We're two for two tonight with great hires. I congratulate the hiring teams within the town that have worked on both positions. Thank you, Susan, for joining our team. And I just was recently reappointed, Cindy, as well, to be the liaison to the senior center on the Council on Aging. So if anything comes up, please give me a call. I know we want to talk about some transportation stuff from the past, that we have more opportunities there to help move volunteers and others around. So I think it's a great position. Typical questions that I go to the town manager on, it's budgeted.
Budgeted.
Reports to the council, Cindy, right? Okay, all set. Thank you very much. Welcome. It's great. Great to see you here tonight.
Mrs. Sistari.
Budgeted? I thought she was volunteering to be a coordinator.
She's coordinating the volunteers.
Coordinating.
We're the volunteers. She's coordinating us.
Good luck with that, Jeff.
You know, I mean, just from, from what you've said and what Mr. Kamala said, I'm not sure whether I should be feeling better for you or for us. You know, it seems like you're, you're going into something where it's truly a labor of love as well, which I think everybody strives to achieve in their daily life. So, you know, it's great to see someone who's going to bring, bring passion and true joy to the job, because I think that, that's, that's where success is going to come from in a role like this especially. So congratulations.
And Mr. Cutino.
Yeah, thank you very much for, for coming, because volunteers are the lifeblood of our town and of, and of organizations like the senior center. And to have you with, with your experience, be able to coordinate these volunteers will definitely lead it to, to greater, even greater things. The, the senior center is something that's really close to my heart. My mother, that was the first place that she went to and absolutely loved it and adored it for the 12 years she was here in town. And it's, it's wonderful that, that you're joining that organization. Thank you very much.
And Susan, right, as all been said, I'm thrilled you're coming back. Your qualifications are terrific. It's nice to have you back here in town and making the senior center continue to be a great place to go. So, thank you again. Mr. Kamala, any final comments?
Just want to thank the HR department for shepherding this process. Maria Casey, Jessica Lawrence, thank you so much.
And a good night for Maria as well here, two, two successes. Okay, so with that, chair will entertain a motion to confirm Susan Stewart as the volunteer coordinator of the senior center.
Second.
The motion's second for discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, is president not voting? That's unanimous. Officially, welcome aboard. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Next item on the agenda, 300th anniversary Light Up the Night and Parade Overview. It's an action item. The board will hear an overview of the Light Up the Night and 300th Anniversary Parade festivities on the weekend of September 12th and 13th. While we want the projector up, I will say that we are in for a weekend like never seen before in this town. So you should all be so lucky as to live 100 years, except it wouldn't be as good as 400. We have, we have a group of volunteers who've been working furiously for, for, I don't know, a year now, plus even four years now, actually. Right, there we go. Putting together a tremendous weekend of events that's going to be very exciting, which is capped by a fireworks show, which I think is going to be the main focus of discussion tonight. So with that, please, take it away and tell us about things.
Good evening. My name is Megan McSkimming-Handerhand, and I have been working on the overall committee for about four years and took a break for about six months and now have been working with Jean and the team on the logistics and planning for the family event, which is called Light Up the Night. And we will also, Paul will be talking about the parade the next day. But I just wanted to give you kind of a big picture overview of, of the planning that has gone on and what we have in store for that particular day. So the event starts at 4:00 and will be centered behind the middle school and the high school. And we will also be using the Center for the Arts for open house tours. We won't actually have any entertainment there, but the community will have an opportunity. You see that there's some things on here. We're in the process of updating our CAD drawings, so there's a couple of changes to this CAD. So 4:00, the event begins. We will have a main stage behind the high school in this area. So you see the main stage there. And we will also have a stage, this is called Sparkle Field, and that is a smaller stage, and that field is dedicated towards children's activities and events. So Sparkle Field behind the high school and the main stage and activities behind the middle school. You see E1, E2, E3, those are the main entrances for the event. We will have 16 food trucks and some picnic tables, which you see when you come right in behind the middle school there. We've got lots of porta potties. We have over 25 police. We have 120 volunteers that will be working a variety of shifts. We will be using some of the front parking lots for sponsor, guest, and disabled parking. All the volunteers will be parking back at E. We will also, we have been working very closely with EMC and Faith Church, and we'll be using 17 motor coaches to run shuttles to and from those locations. And we'll have volunteers and police support there as well. So after we fill these local lots, some of the streets, the EMC park, we will be directing everyone to Faith Church and to the EMC lots. We have two stages of entertainment. The main stage, a variety of local groups, some of them young groups, high school groups, recent grads, culminating with Steve Specter's Hot Acoustics that will play for an hour. And we will end the evening with the Metro West Orchestra, who will play the 1812 overture in conjunction with the beginning of the fireworks. And then there's a 30-minute fireworks show. We have a couple of unique little features. You see Dee in the middle of the main field. Ken Wisemantle has kindly agreed to build us a huge birthday cake, so that will be located there. We will also have a project, which is a national project, that is a vendor that I've used in my past professional experience. I don't know if you're familiar with the photographer who did the photographs at the Boston Marathon finish line the year after the bombings, but he does a project called Dear World. And I called and asked if we could replicate that project here, and he agreed. So we will be using the gym in the middle school for a project called Dear Hopkinton, which we will be able to take up to 4,000 photographs of local community members, where you write on your arm personal messages, where, again, I don't know if you're familiar with the photographer who did the photographs at the Boston Marathon finish line the year after the bombings, but he does a project called Dear World. And I called and asked if we could replicate that project here, and he agreed. So we will be using the gym in the middle school for a project called Dear Hopkinton, which we will be able to take up to 4,000 photographs of local community members where you write on your arm personal messages. We're again working with John Copley to then put together a huge photograph with 300 on it with all the individual statements and individual community members. We'll have all kinds of activities on the Sparkle Field, inflatables and face painting, balloon artists, all kinds of fun things. And I think that pretty much, oh, the decade. We're not going to actually have tents now, but if you see along the fence line that goes down to the field kays, we're going to have signage and gathering spots for each of the decades that attended Hopkinton High School. Should they want to meet in a particular location, they will have that opportunity. We've had great support, thank goodness, from Jamie and from all the town departments. So we are working with schools, the DPW, the fire, the police. We will have emergency vehicles. Jamie has agreed to work with us in the emergency location. We will also have a volunteer and command center located in the high school cafeteria. And the Doghouse is working with us as part of the food availability and lots of entertainment on Sparkle Field, which is more kids' entertainment. I think that's pretty good. We're hoping that the fireworks will start 8:15, 8:20. We are going to have to shuttle folks. We're going to have to come up with a logistics plan and do tickets to get them out because 17 buses will not cover all the people that will potentially be at Faith Church and EMC Park. But in the effort to maximize budget, we're going to give them actual tickets that say what time their shuttle can depart, so we don't have everybody at the loop waiting to go at the same time. And Steve Spector has agreed to play for another half an hour just to keep people entertained until they can leave. A lot of the streets will be closed in the Hopkinton area that lead into the school area as of, I think it's Wednesday or Thursday that the no parking signs are going up. The local communities have donated multiple reader boards, so those will be on all entrances coming into the town, basically describing road closures and timing and some of that logistical information.
Excellent. That's a good introduction. And do we want to hear about the parade too? And then we'll go to the board for questions?
Hi, I'm Paul Witscher. And we've been, as a committee, working on the parade for three years. And we're going to have a fantastic parade. There you can see the parade route. It starts and ends at the high school. We're basically going to take most of the parking in the high school. There will be parking for people who want to watch the parade at Hopkins, but the general area, the high school and middle school will be taken for people in the parade, vans, buses, and so on. We're going to have fire trucks start at 12:15. They'll go off at 12:15, and the parade will start at 1:00. There's going to be 13 vans, 19 marching units, and 21 floats. And those floats, a lot of them are from people in the community. We actually had to stop taking applications for floats. We were kind of overwhelmed having so many people want to build a float to be in the parade. So I think that's a tribute to the people in the town wanting to do something like that. I have here, if you care to look at it, I can give it to you so you can take a peek. Just give you an idea of the bands in the parade. But the highlight ones are the US Navy Band, which we are very fortunate to get, the Mamas from Philadelphia, and the Millville, Blackstone-Millville High School Band, which is the Division V state champion and regional champion, as well as the Shriners and a number of other bands. So we will be closing the roads at 12:00. The lists have been set out by Jamie to all of the people in the area so that they know when the roads are going to close. And the only thing we have to ask for is a good day. Have a great parade.
Put in order.
Thank you.
That's a great, oh, do you have anything?
I just want to add one thing.
Go, yeah.
I'm Michelle, and I'm doing the communications. So I just want to point out that all of this information will be up on the 300th website, which is www.hopkingtonmass300.com. And we also have a Facebook page, which has over 1,000 followers. So all this information in more detail will be posted there shortly. So anything, anybody wants to know what's happening, that's where they should go.
Awesome. Okay, thank you, Michelle. So we have quite a celebration planned. Mr. Catino, you want to start with questions?
I'm just inundated with, I'm just glad the Shriners are coming and all that with Shriners. Now, this is, it's such a great thing. Thank you for putting this all together. Just all the volunteers that involved years in the planning and to think that it's coming together and to see the size of it and to hear how many floats are going to be there. Just fantastic. Thank you very much for all the coordination and making this such a great celebration for the town.
Mr. Mosher.
It looks like a lot of work. Thank you very much for all that you put into this. For a town that handles the marathon, this should seem easy, but as the chairman commented, you can't just pull the plan from the 200th celebration and run with it. So, you know, this town is so dynamic. Things change almost monthly, it seems. So, thank you for your efforts and staying with it through what I'm sure are many logistical headaches. And I'm really looking forward to the celebration.
Mrs. Astari.
So the comment on, you know, pulling together the marathon and then looking at this, I mean, the marathon only starts here. This starts here and ends here.
Good point. And belongs up here.
So it's bigger.
Yeah, that's right.
It's bigger.
But we really don't have any idea of the turnout. I mean, the police are telling us 5,000 to 10,000 potentially.
Really? You know, I mean, this is amazing. You know, I remember, you know, three, four years ago or more that when we were starting to think about this and starting to pull people together to lay the foundation for where we are today. And, you know, it's just one of those things that has happened so quickly. And that's coming from, you know, from us, and we're not the ones who are there, you know, trying to get it all done on time. Can only imagine how it is for all the volunteers who have put this in place. But, yeah, this is going to be, it's going to be a great weekend. And the whole year's been fantastic so far with the different events that we've had and, you know, different surprises and, you know, things like the time capsule and how well it's worked out. I mean, this is going to be a perfect weather weekend. We're going to have a, it's going to be a great time, great turnout. So, great. Thank you.
We just also wanted to mention that the main date for the fireworks will be on Sunday. However, we won't likely have the food trucks and the entertainment. We will just have fireworks on Sunday. And we still could use a lot of volunteers. We need 120 for the event. And I think, Paul, you have 40 or 50 volunteers for the parade. So if you could go on the website, I think it's the Parks and Rec.
It's on the Parks and Rec website. There's a sign up for volunteers. There's a link to it from the 300th website. I don't know how many have signed up on the site yet.
We're getting some good sign up, but we have, we definitely did short shifts so that people could volunteer for a few hours and then still enjoy for a few hours. So, and we know that there's a lot of kids out there that need to fulfill their junior volunteer hours and National Honor Society kids, and a lot of great people in the community who would just love to be involved, and they get a T-shirt, so.
You didn't mention that part before, so. Mr. Herr, any questions?
Can we go back to the layout for the Saturday event? The E1, E2, and E3, so those are control points for people to get back into the areas where all the festivities take place. How are they going to be set up?
We will have volunteers plus police at each of those locations. We're going to have big balloon columns that designate them as entrances. We have all kinds of volunteers and police that will be in the areas where the public can't be. For example, beyond that, we will have a snow fence behind the football field because the access to the fireworks is dangerous and no one can be there. So we'll have a lot of police and volunteers. You'll be able to use the lots at Hopkins, but any area where we cannot have public access, we will have police as well as volunteers.
And to pass through these entry points, is this free or is there a charge to come in? It's free, okay.
And there are certain things that the public will be asked not to bring. So that will be listed in, on the website, as well as the information that we get out in the local papers the weeks prior to the event.
Great. And then to the communications effort, is that for both the parade as well as the festivities Saturday? Yeah. I would really push the 30-minute fireworks show because a lot of small-town America, the fireworks last about six minutes. You know, people take an hour to get there. They have a six-minute fireworks, and they go, what the heck was that? And they go home. 30 minutes is a great show.
Well, and it's the company that does the fireworks in Boston on the 4th of July.
Yeah, so I think we want to really push the duration and who's doing it because that's a big, big draw, and that's really exciting. So I think it's going to be a great weekend. I'm looking forward to it.
I think there's festivities on Friday night as well with the potential fountain reopening.
Awesome. Right, so thank you all. This has been terrific. I mean, you're right. To say this has been an enormous amount of work is a dramatic understatement. We did a run-through last week, and you would not believe the logistics involved in this. And it is worth pointing out again that it's also the weekend of Polyarts. We'll hopefully turn the fountain on. Anybody could look at, we're going to try to get the fountain running again Friday night. There'll be a birthday cake and a common Friday night. There's a ton of things. So it's going to be an enormous weekend. Everyone's going to be very, very tired Sunday night. So, thank you all for coming in. I don't think there's anything we have to do in this right now, Ms. Kamala. This is just an update.
It's my birthday that week too.
That's actually why we have the fireworks.
Oh, that's fun.
So that was.
It's my birthday too, so.
Will Mr. Wisemantle need a building permit for his cake? I think we should make him submit one.
I think he's conflicted.
Well, he's going to be, he's going to say it's a float, so.
We're going to call him a common victor and make him come get a food license.
Yeah, that's right. I think we should put him through the wringer.
Thank you all for coming in, Megan, Paul.
It's a rum cake. You'll need a liquor license.
He'll need every license in that.
From one highlight to the next, and this team's positively small by comparison, the Boston Athletic Association Field Size, an action item. Tonight, the Board of Selectmen will hear from BAA Executive Director Thomas S. Grillke, who requests the Board approve a preliminary field size for the 2016 Boston Marathon. Mr. Grillke, welcome, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. It is, as ever, a privilege and a pleasure to be here. And I come here, yes, to speak of the 2016 Boston Marathon. If I may, I'll make an introduction first. Some of you may have met. We have a gentleman with us now, Doug Flannery, who stands with me, who is now our Senior Operations Manager within the BAA. He joins us after a 31-year distinguished career with the United States Navy, having retired this past year. I have a quote of him that he is not the only such person in the room. Retired as a commander this past year, and his, one's esteem for his judgment continues to accelerate as he is a resident now of the town of Hopkinton. So he is a local resident here. So it will be good for all. I think you might see more of Doug than of me in some of these things since he will be at the center of our operations work, working with Dave McGilvery and the people from DMSI who do so much of the work, the logistics work and organizational work for the marathon and for our other events. I'm here, we are here, this evening in furtherance of a letter sent to the board on July 17 concerning next year's marathon. And we are here to seek initial, and it is that, initial approval for a field size, once again, of 30,000 runners, the same field size that we had last year. We will begin registration for next year's marathon in mid-September and in the spirit of collaboration with which we have always worked. We didn't want to do anything like that without first talking with you folks and getting at least an initial sense that it is all right with you to proceed that way. Naturally, formal approval will follow a review by the board of our request for a parade permit, which we will file immediately. There have been discussions among our people, Dave McGilvery and others, with town officials here, including the police department. Chief Lee is here this evening. The fire department is represented here this evening. And so far, we are all in accord that if we are, if we were to do virtually the same thing as was done last year, the same field size, the same four waves, the same schedule, with the same level of support for town public safety officials from state and other public safety officials, then that would be a sensible way to proceed. But first, we wanted to speak to you about it and obtain at least an initial approval from you to proceed in this direction.
Thank you for coming in. Thank you. Nice to, very nice to meet you. So the ask is for 30,000 runners this year?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Let me also just, since you're here, I'm going to do this with you here tonight. Every year, although it's not linked at all with the decision, the BAA generously grants a set of waivers to the community. Last year, you gave us 50 that we use for charitable purposes in the community. And what we do as a board is we distribute them to, charitable organizations all apply. We have a little lottery, trying to make it into something fun. And then we distribute those out, and then those folks actually get people to run for them and to raise money, which primarily stays within the community ideally. So I'd like you to know, tonight, we got the final tally, and the 50 waivers last year, which went to all sorts of causes in town, raised a total of $251,238.15. So I must thank you again for your generosity. As you know, we started doing this in earnest about five, four or five years ago now. The first year, we raised $87,000. So we've gotten much better at it over time. So this has been another great benefit to the community, and I want to take the opportunity to thank you for your continued generosity in.
Well, we are pleased to do it, and we are very much of the mind that this is a collaboration. And so with all of the support that is received from the town for this, the town should have some opportunity to decide who will be at the starting line. So you may certainly be assured that that same opportunity will be available this year.
Thank you.
Maybe the total will continue to rise.
So let me go to the board for questions, and since he actually runs the thing, let me go to Mr. Herr to start.
Can we talk about the waves for a minute?
Yes.
And the spacing of the waves? It seems like they're further and further apart each year. And it seems to sort of take some of the energy out of the start after that first wave goes. And being one of the fourth-wave types, right? It does not the same sense going off in the fourth wave as there is in that fleet wave.
So you're negotiating for an earlier wave start?
No, no, no. I don't want to. I'll get trampled. Why do we have to spread it out so much? Why can't we condense a little bit?
The principal reason has been that it is, it is difficult, to say the least, to have the entire field out here in Hopkinton. And the arrangement that had been reached with the town and public safety officials from the town and elsewhere was that at no time would more than half the field be at the athletes' village. So as the first two waves are moving out, the second two waves are coming into town. So the extra, I think, five minutes between waves was inserted in order to allow that process to work effectively and to avoid too much crowding and perhaps some degree of public safety risk from arising. We are quite willing to work with the town on any of those issues.
Okay, so is it possible that we have some more dialogue about that? And I'd be happy to go as the board member if I could because I hear a lot about that. As a runner and as a participant of many, 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 many years and with a lot of people out in town talking about different things, I think if we could try and at least talk about it, so maybe we can better educate everybody as to why we have the waves and why there's a little bit of time in between there, I think that might help.
It would be a fine conversation to have, and we would welcome it.
Separate question if I could. I'll ask it in a generic manner, so as not to incriminate anybody. Who tracks the streakers within the organization of the BAA?
Well, we do it rather informally, largely because there have been, the number has been negligible. When somebody counted a year ago, I don't know if I've heard a number this year.
38.
I don't know if you did. Yeah. So, and a year ago, we counted about 12 feet, six people.
Would that be under, the commander, I'm sorry, commander, I missed your first name there.
Doug.
Doug. Would that be under Doug's responsibility going forward?
Well, it certainly rests within the BAA, yes.
If I knew somebody that wanted to talk about that, who would they reach out to?
Oh, Commander Flannery, for sure.
I'll send Mr. Chairman.
He's our Logistics Operations Officer.
Blowing officer. Mr. Astari.
How you doing, Tom?
Very well, thank you.
It's always good to have you back here. I have no concerns whatsoever with keeping the field at 30,000. Last year, I know that we were very, well, over the past several years, we've had lots of conversations with you. Well, over the past several years, we've had lots of conversations with you, and obviously it was with great caution that, you know, we moved to up the field size. I thought things went extremely smoothly last year, and looking forward to the next marathon, so...
Well, thank you.
Mr. Mosher.
I see you back, Tom. I really don't have much to say. I mean, it's gone off very well the last few years, and more continued success.
Well, thank you. Mr. Mosher and I spent many, many hours together leading up to the marathon in 2014, after what happened in 2013.
And somehow, the number of streakers never came up.
Certainly, you never raised it, yeah.
Somebody's guilty. Mr. Gattino.
Yeah, I'm just always amazed at how smoothly everything goes. It's just clockwork, precision, and, yeah, I think that the 30,000 number is great. It worked out well last year, and it was even, you know, first time in a while it was bad weather. And here, we were worried about the snow and everything else, and it all melted weeks before and everything else, so that all worked out great. And really, thank you very much for the entries, because it really means a lot to the town and the organizations around the community. And I don't know if this is the top desk, but, you know, we could always use more. You never, if you ever can... You know, you don't get anything if you don't ask, and maybe it's not anything.
You find them in your couch cushions.
Exactly, if this, you know, that's...
Life does work that way, yes.
But, you know, if you can't get anything without asking.
You planning on running?
Huh? No, no, for the back to the community. So we could, you know, it's something we've gotten good at, at raising money to do things, and it always can help if it's at all possible. But thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. So it's not like the Board is pretty happy with things as they've run. I don't sense any issues with the 30,000 number. So Chair Lantana motioned for the Board of Selectmen... I want to be clear, by the way, before I do that. This is not the issuance of the final permit, you know this full well, but just so everybody knows.
That is correct.
This is not, this is by no means absolutely settled, this is just a preliminary number. So the Board, Chair Lantana motioned the Board to approve a preliminary field size for the 2016 Boston Marathon of 30,000 runners.
So moved.
Motion in a second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, present on voting? That's unanimously approved? Hopefully, Mr. Kamala doesn't have a spoiler now. Sir?
No, I won't. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Tom and his team for continuing to grow the footprint of the marathon in the town, growing it as an asset in the community, but most importantly, broadening the spirit of the marathon. We appreciate that. And also to take this opportunity to welcome Commander Flannery to the team, and also thank you for your service to the nation.
Well, it remains for us a privilege to work with all of you, and as I have said here before, when I come to these meetings, it just kind of feels like we're going home, talking to the hometown crew, and it, as much as anything, it leaves us with a very powerful sense of obligation to all of you and the people here to live up to the responsibilities that you give us and the standards to which you hold yourselves. We'll do our best.
You know, if you'd been a Navy veteran, I'd have gone for 40,000. Put that aside. So, thank you. Thank you all. Thank you all for coming in tonight.
We have permit requests we'll file this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice to meet you guys. Next item on the agenda, Tech Sandbox update discussion. This will be a good one for folks who aren't as familiar with Tech Sandbox. The Board will hear a brief update and accomplishments at one of Hopkinton's newest businesses, not even anymore, I think I would say well-established businesses, Tech Sandbox and their upcoming endeavors. Barbara, welcome. Can you introduce yourself?
Thank you, guys, for inviting me and everybody, I really appreciate the opportunity. We also feel part of the community. So we started Tech Sandbox almost two years ago, actually, we moved in right after Labor Day weekend two years ago. So while to you it feels established, to me it still feels like a startup, but there you go. So as you know, we have 8,500 square feet right over on South Street, and one of the pieces of news I'll share with you is we're actually looking for 2,500 square feet more and fundraising to put in a makerspace, which I'll explain in just a second. One of the things I wanted to take a second just to remind you all of is that we are a not-for-profit, we did this for a number of reasons that I won't go into right now, but there are a lot of ties that bind, including things like Eagle Scouts and things like that. But one of the things I wanted to mention is there are over 3,500 incubators across the United States. The grand majority of those are out of universities, or they're out of actual cities where there tends to be a larger population, maybe some universities in them. Most of the incubators have support from the cities or from the universities in terms of real estate being paid for, positions being funded and all of that. We are doing something very different by doing something like Tech Sandbox in a region based in Hopkinton, which doesn't fit any of those descriptions. And so as such, funding is actually one of our biggest concerns in making this go forward. But I wanted to talk to you a little bit about what we've accomplished, just to give you an update, because I think you'll find it kind of interesting. Just a quickie for any of you who don't know Tech Sandbox. So again, 8,500 square feet on South Street, and our mission is to accelerate the success of science and technology entrepreneurs and their businesses. And we've done that successfully for over 20 companies so far. A few have fast failed, which is fine, because then their bank accounts at home aren't at risk, but a number of them have actually gotten funding. So we've taken the best practices of what's happening in Boston and made a little microcosm here out in Metro West, right here in Hopkinton. And that's coworking space, mentors, advisors. We run four to eight programs consistently every single month in different sectors, some of you have come to some of our programming. And we're bringing in 100, 125 people a month through our doors to those programs, in addition to the, I believe, up to 24 resident entrepreneurs that are in Tech Sandbox at this point in time. Again, a few have left the building, but there you go. So we are attracting new people to understand what Hopkinton has to offer. In our grander mission, any of you who read, I think it was Metro West Daily News about a year and a half ago, where, you know, it was Silicon Valley East, that really is my personal mission. I moved to this area from downtown Boston in the 80s to join the mini-computer revolution, and then there was the telecom revolution, and this was the place to be, even for, you know, a 22-year-old. And now, as you know, there's the brain drain, everybody's, even from, who live in areas like this, tend to commute into Boston to work. And I see that as the kind of wrong wave, if you will. So what do we need to do as a town to actually even make this area be recognized for being more innovative? And it has to start with a bunch of us coming together and doing things of this nature. Tech Sandbox isn't the end-all and be-all, by the way. So we have all these resources in one location with our 24/7 access for these entrepreneurs, although most of them are not there at midnight like they might be in Boston, and provide them with all of these resources in one place. We also have this mini-makerspace right now, where we've got an equipment donated from Analog Devices, MathWorks, Microsoft, I'm trying to think of who else, several others were actually signing a contract with SolidWorks right now. So this is tens of thousands of dollars' worth of licenses and equipment in this makerspace, so that we can support software companies as well as companies doing hardware, clean tech, robotics, energy, life sciences, medical devices in our space. And what we need is a bigger one of those to attract even more businesses that want to actually come. And what they have to do is develop prototypes very often in order to get funding. The investors are conservative in this part of the world, and they want to see kind of at least an inkling of a product working, so that's kind of what we're there to help them with. We've attracted over 50 volunteers, some of them are from Hopkinton, it is a very volunteer-oriented community, I'm gonna give you some more stats on that in a minute, and dozens of other sponsors from within Hopkinton and without. So again, we've helped over 20 companies actually either find mentors, find advisors, find investors, find partners, you know, someplace along their journey, some of them you'll start seeing in the news pretty soon. And hopefully, they're gonna, you know, grow and their businesses within Hopkinton directly. We've also been what's called a virtual incubator to a number of companies, too. Those are ones that, for whatever reason, choose to not reside, you know, keep their company locations within Tech Sandbox, but they come in for that advising and mentoring and office hours. So there are dozens of those as well. So, some of the things you might want to know, Hopkinton, we're getting a lot of recognition for Hopkinton. I hope you guys read some of the local press, we've been in the Boston Globe, Boston Globe West, X Economy, Metro West Daily News, Worcester Business Journal, et cetera, et cetera. I brought you some, you can have my pictures if you'd like them, and some of the press that we've gotten. And all of them, of course, say that we're in Hopkinton, so hopefully that's helping with some of the positive recognition. We're getting revenue pull, you know, for the town. I know there's a special term for that, but if you think about the fact that we probably order a couple hundred dollars' worth of pizza from Bills every single week, there's, you know, there's an example, and they deliver. Nancy Flaherty, one of our volunteers that lives in town, talked them into delivering for us, yay! It's one of the things we don't have enough of in Hopkinton, so we use them all the time and, you know, get, give them revenue as well, Price Chopper, places like that. So hopefully, some of that, we're keeping track of things, we try to tag everything with Hopkinton, if it was purchased in Hopkinton for the business, but people also buy things directly. Again, hoping that we're a magnet for other businesses, and so, you know, some of the things that we do, I know, I ran this really quickly, so I apologize, because Hopkinton spelled wrong in one place, but from our database, I actually, I'll give these to David. I actually went into our database and just pulled some quick stats, because I knew that this was probably true, and it's nice to say that my understanding of our database was true. We actually looked at all the people in our database, and it's pretty substantial, and did a pie chart of what townspeople either say they live or work in. We don't always know whether it's live or work. And you'll see the percentages with 11% coming from Worcester, which is kind of interesting, 10% from Hopkinton, so that's number two. Westboro was 10%, but it was just short of that, so that was the third one, then Marlboro, and you can read this around. But just to kind of show you some of the impact and who we're serving within the town, we're definitely serving the immediate area, which is Hopkinton, you know, Southboro, Westboro, as you would expect, Marlboro. Then at the bottom, I actually, again, we have the resident entrepreneurs, as we call them, the ones that call Tech Sandbox home, and six of the resident companies, or six people from the resident companies call Hopkinton home. So just some real numbers to kind of show you the impact on the people within the town, as well as some of the financial impact, and hopefully, in the grander scheme of things, our part in making Metro West greater than it once was, because when I was out here, there really weren't even any movie theaters or restaurants right back in the 80s, we've come so much further. So I'm hoping that, you know, we'll be a magnet and have people attracted, oops, to the region for other reasons besides the wonderful quality of life that towns like Hopkinton bring. So I was asked to come and also mention what maybe people in Hopkinton could do for our town, yes?
Not you, the HCam person.
Oh, sorry.
Our monitor went out.
Okay. That's been blank a whole lot, and it's been flashing on and off the whole night. So what can, what can Hopkinton continue to do for us? I think the biggest thing for us is, again, fundraising. We need some of the large entities, some of the large corporations within Metro West, some of which are in Hopkinton, to actually step forward and become sponsors for Tech Sandbox. Sponsorship for businesses is typically an exchange of goodwill and some form of marketing for them to have an affiliation with the organization they're sponsoring. A lot of the companies in this area are sponsoring organizations that are similar to Tech Sandbox, but they're inside 128. I need your help getting them to help us, you know, create this center of innovation here. So introduction to any decision-makers in the large players in the region is one of the things you can do. We also, I was told that this would be a good place to ask this. So Nancy Flaherty is one of our volunteers, she's a retired Hopkinton resident, and she comes in two days a week, at least half a day, if not full days, for me to help with registration and database work and keeping me sane and all of that, because it really is just me. We could use another few volunteers, and so some introductions maybe to some people that have children in young grades at school that have some time during the day that could help me, and I'll give them very quality work. So the bridging the resume problem for some people who decide to do the parent track is always a tough challenge. I have real work for people, I have marketing work, I have accounting work, I have, you know, just about anything from a business perspective, as well as helping answer doors and things like that. So if any of you can connect, I don't, I didn't want to kind of lurk outside of daycare and say, "Hi, do you need any volunteer?" But any of you that might know connections, that would be great. And the third thing is really an easy one that I ask of everybody in the room, please tell people about us. The best thing you can do is, when you go home tonight, and I'm telling you, it takes two minutes, it's called a five-minute favor, but only take two, which is to go email a couple of people that you know that are in the tech sector and let them know about what we do. Our four to eight programs a month are in support of tech entrepreneurs, but they also are a way of gathering stakeholders within the community of STEM professionals together for topics that might be of interest to them. This is where we're trying to mix up, you know, the stakeholders from various company sizes and service providers, so that they come to the room and they interact. So telling somebody that might be interested in some of our topics and what we do would really help us a lot. You know, we estimate that there are 25,000 people in Metro West that need to know about us, that need us, and we haven't even hit the tip of the iceberg in getting the word out to them. So respectfully, that's my information to you, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm sorry I have to do the glasses thing, I scratched my cornea, so I'm kind of, can't wear my contacts. And now I can actually see your faces.
All right, well, that was wonderful and very high-speed. So let's go over to Mr. Sastari to start.
No, I've been to, I've been to some of the sessions that they've had down at Tech Sandbox, I'm a member down there, I enjoy going down there for the sessions when I can. I think it's a...
I'm more often.
I know, I know. You know, it's not always easy, but, no, it's a, I think it's a great benefit to people, whether they're trying to get a startup off the ground, whether they're trying to network, anything of that nature, and then obviously, the volunteers there who are some of the more seasoned professionals, it's, you know, it's great to see them there, you know, giving back, giving back to that particular community as well, so...
Mr. Mosher.
Yeah, that was high-speed. If you're, if you're looking to get people involved volunteer-wise and get the word out and things like that, just add this little side thought, a lot of the books that I've read on very successful people, they had unusual opportunities that coincide with their skillset, and you might want to talk to the school committee at some point and see if maybe there's some synergy with, with students in Hopkinton, and that would open up a whole new reservoir of potential volunteers and things like that. Maybe you've already done that, just, just a thought, but I think it's a great resource to have here, so, thank you.
We actually have a college intern that's a Hopkinton resident and a high school intern that's a Hopkinton resident this summer. So, yeah, always can use more. Thank you.
I want to keep going, but I just, I have to open a public hearing, because that was scheduled for a 15. So we have a posted public hearing, a joint poll hearing, an action item. The Board will consider a joint petition from Verizon New England Incorporated to place new polls at the following location on Hayden Row. On the northeasterly side, relocate J.O. poll number T-100/E-100 approximately 220 feet northwest of Lee from the center line of Grant Street. So can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's look on you. Okay, opposed. Okay, that's unanimous. I'm gonna continue the public hearing, so we're gonna come back to you right now. So we're gonna keep it, I just need to open it, we're gonna set aside for a minute, and then we'll come back to you now. That was just administrative detail.
Thank you.
Were you done?
I was. Under Mr. Hurry.
I think it's a great resource for the community, I've been there a couple of times. I was there, I went into Tech Sandbox, which was in Southboro on Route 9, and it's grown substantially from there to here, which is great to see, but there's a lot more capacity there, I think there's a lot more bandwidth there. It's the tech term.
Microphone. So, all good stuff. We had the Senior Center folks in here earlier this evening, and we just hired a new volunteer coordinator for the Senior Center. I'm sure there's some seniors that have been in business, that are interested in technology or new startups or new ideas that would be interested in maybe lending a hand over there, so I think it would be appropriate to reach out to them and see if they want to spend some time doing some work at Tech Sandbox.
That would be wonderful.
I think the school committee idea is a great idea, and there's a lot of, you know, there's more and more small startup tech-type firms in Hawkington beyond Tech Sandbox that we also should try to tap into somehow. But I think to try and create an economy, a local economy, a regional economy, based on new technology is absolutely the way to go for the future, not only for the residents, you know, the people that work at these places, but for the community. Our tax base would be greatly improved if we could continue to fuel this type of growth in the area, so I think we should try and do whatever we can as a board and as a town to make it happen. But I'd reach out to the senior center for sure, there's some great people over there.
Nancy does volunteer work there too, so that's great.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Great, thank you. Over to Mr. Catino.
Yeah, I think we're very lucky to have you here in Hawkington, and I'm not just speaking because I'm an inventor, actually John's also an inventor, and, you know, we've started small companies, and I've been up there, I should have used you guys much more, and I plan to in the future, but thank you very much for all you're doing, and, you know, if we can get this going a lot faster, like you said, like Brian said, we can make a lot out of it.
We're getting some nudging from the state. We've actually had Undersecretary Stebbins come in, and she's looking for us to actually create a new initiative to try to tie veteran tech entrepreneurs into Tech Sandbox, and I think that that would be wonderful, and I know that that resonated with you guys, so some help in that arena as well, we're being connected into the Navy Labs and all of that, but to actually have a special focus so we can pull veterans who want to create tech businesses in and help them be successful too, so. Connections, it's all about connections. Thank you very much for the invitation.
I just got a couple of questions before I go. How are you funded? I mean, how, where does all the money come from?
Yeah, so the first few years were mostly from me and Harold Nahigian, who's the, you know, the real estate property owner, who's basically given us a pass on almost all of the costs for two years. That is coming to an end, you know, in the not-too-distant future, and I'm not independently wealthy, so at some point in time I need to be able to pay my own food bills and all of that, which is one of the reasons why we really need to crack the nut on the larger corporations. So we get a lot of small donations from service providers, law firms and accounting firms and all of that, and it's kept us afloat, and then increasing the number of resident entrepreneurs we have kind of keeps some of the variable costs in check, but really to be able to do the things we need, we need to scale faster.
So when folks come in, they pay something, but it's dramatically less than, I guess, it's something.
$200 a month.
Yeah.
That includes coffee, Wi-Fi.
A bargain, any price, yeah, all right, okay.
It's really meant to be just a, you don't get it for free factor, right?
Well, I think what you heard clearly is the board wants you to succeed, and so maybe it's a follow-up, what we should do is try to find some time, we can sit down with you, maybe with Mr. Kamal, and just sort of talk through some ideas about folks to approach, where places you've been and you want to go, get some ideas from the board members, and help you, and help you try to.
And I know several large company execs live right in Hawkington, I can name some of them.
All right. Well, maybe we should look for pathways to see if we can help you make some of those connections, give some introductions. All right, thank you for coming in, this was great.
Thank you, guys, for inviting me and Brian for instigating this connection. Thanks very much, I'm really happy to be here, so.
Good to see you again.
Thanks.
Thanks a lot.
Take care. Okay, so we'll return now to item 10, the posted public hearing, joint poll hearing, an action item from Verizon. Do we have a Verizon representative? Sir, can I ask you to come to the podium and introduce yourself?
Thank you. My name is Thomas Blicarz, B as in boy, L I C H A R Z. I work for UC Synergetic. We are consultants for Verizon, and we provide rights-of-way and engineering services to them, so I'm here on behalf of Verizon to petition for a new location for pole number The reason we need to move it is because of the new development, Davenport Village. I'm sure you've seen the driveway being pushed in and the new stone walls, so this pole would currently sit right in the middle of the entrance, so the utility companies just need to move the pole out of the way. So we'll move it 21 feet to the north and transfer our equipment and cable to the new pole, take out the old pole, so no, no net, new poles will be added.
Okay. Going for questions, Mr. Mosher.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sistari.
No questions.
Mr. Har.
Can we ask a related question, or do we have to close the public hearing first?
We should do the hearing on this topic first.
No questions on this topic.
Okay, I'll come back to that, I won't forget. And then Mr. Catino.
I'm fine, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chairman, I do have one.
Go.
One question for the town manager. Do we have any pending business with Verizon?
Should we do that outside the public hearing context on this poll specifically?
Back to my question.
So I'll come to you as well on that topic.
Very good.
Okay, so we have no questions on, from the board on this poll. Do we have any questions from the public, abutters, any interested parties at all? Okay, hearing no takers. Chair, I maintain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second motion, we have a second for a discussion on that topic. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, president not voting, that's unanimous, the public hearing is now closed, so now the board can deliberate, and I think also this would be the appropriate time to ask questions outside the context of the public hearing. So, Mr. Kamal, was there something you wanted to say first?
Yes, I can mention that at the present moment, we have a great relationship with Verizon. Ellen Cummings is our contact, and she's been very responsive when we've had questions, including when we needed Verizon to submit the requirements for this application. In terms of pending business, we are scheduling our first negotiations with Verizon on the license renewal process.
Okay. Mr. Har, you had a question outside the public hearing.
So outside the public hearing and away from this topic, but if I could to a representative that, it sounds like he works quite a bit with Verizon, it's my understanding that throughout the center of the community here, Verizon owns the poles? Do we own the poles now?
No, the, the poles are jointly owned with the Eversource and Verizon. It just so happens in the town of Hawkington, Verizon sets the poles. Next town over, Eversource will set the poles.
Okay, so Verizon.
But they're jointly owned 50/50.
So, and then Verizon is a 50% partner in managing what's on the poles?
Yes, sir.
Is that a fair statement? So in my travels to other communities throughout the Commonwealth, I rarely see, in all these communities I've been to, I rarely see the spaghetti I see here in the center of Hawkington. There's a lot of clusters across Massachusetts where they'll put a cluster across the top of the pole, eight cables or 10 cables or something like that, and I know there's low voltage and high voltage and EMF and all that, I get it, but there's a much better way to do it than what we have out here. And, you know, we've been talking about putting the things under the ground because we're sick of looking at them, we've been talking about a lot of things, I don't think we've ever really explored cleaning up what we have. How would we get that done?
Well, the way to do it is to go underground, and so there'll be a way that Verizon could probably consolidate some of the copper cables it has up there, because we don't have as many customers running through the copper cables anymore, it's all in files, or our competitors have taken customers, so, you know, we could probably make the cables smaller, but the idea would be to place everything underground, and that's expensive to do.
If we can't go underground because of the cost, if we can't go underground, can we clean up what we have?
Um, I mean, sure, anything is possible. Like I said, if there are three or four copper cables, could be all consolidated into a single cable, maybe two, so yes, there would, there would be a way to consolidate and make many cables fewer cables, make larger cables smaller cables, sure.
So not to put you on the spot, Mr. Chair, or, sorry, not to put you on the spot, but you've seen outside here, have you seen outside here the spaghetti we have in Hawkington?
Oh, sure, oh, yes.
Do you see the spaghetti, is it me, or is it, you see the spaghetti, right? Okay.
I've seen that, but there are many.
So it's not unreasonable expectation.
There are a lot of towns, downtown areas with, you know, tons of aerial plant, it's just, you know, we just.
They don't go like this, you know, we can just go like this around here.
Yeah.
They're a little bit more lined up.
What do they do?
Go like this.
You're getting too technical, I can't follow this.
Yeah, it's true, it's true, there are communities where the stuff has been put underground right from day one, and it was a good idea to do so, but in Hawkington, you know, there is some conduit in Hawkington, but it's more for the express cables that ride through town, but the local stuff is on the poles, so, yeah, it's possible, and, you know, you would have to get a request into someone in Verizon, probably someone in the old public services, you know, public relations department, I could get you a name, and you could submit a letter asking for, you know, a college try to get the stuff consolidated.
Last question, Mr. Chair, I promise, to the chair, or to the town manager. We've never really talked about cleaning up what we have, though, have we?
We have.
We have?
After you made the suggestion, yes.
I don't recall having the conversation after the suggestion.
You made the suggestion, and when we had the site walkthrough for the undergrounding of utilities discussion, I did raise that issue.
And what was said?
It's a long process. Our focus at this point is if we can get everybody to agree on undergrounding, I think that's where our energy goes. As an alternative, yes, then that could be far bad, but however, right now, we want to focus on undergrounding.
The problem is, even if you go clean it up, you still get the poles in the middle of sidewalks, right? So you still get.
Poles, poles don't look bad when the wires that are on them aren't crazy. Seriously, I mean, there's a lot of nice downtowns in small-town Massachusetts that have poles that look a thousand times better than what we look at.
I would put that in a letter to someone from public relations, I could get you the name, and make a case, make a proposition that Verizon take a good look at it. I live here in Hawkington, and I ride underneath that stuff every day by the drugstore. I used to work, I probably engineered some of those cables back in the seventies and eighties, so. I've been around for a while.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mosher, you had a question outside.
The town manager clarified his relationship with Verizon, so I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have a question for Mr. Kamal. Have we made any progress at reducing the number of double poles in town?
Yeah, we continue to work with Verizon on that issue. We, we, we have hit a target that so far, I think, we're pretty much meeting.
So you're satisfied with the progress that we're making on that?
Yes, I am.
The speed of the progress?
Speed, there's so much that we can do. I would like the process to be much quicker, but in terms of the direction of the effort, yes, I'm satisfied.
And when they submit a request for a public hearing like this, how long does it take us to get it on the agenda? One meeting, two meetings, six months?
We were, we were pretty efficient in this case, Jamie, first contact from your office, I'm trying to remember when you called me, a couple weeks ago, so we were, we were pretty efficient when we did this, so.
Great.
We expect the same response from Verizon.
Yeah, yeah, I'd love for that message to get through to Verizon, so.
Final question from me, at least, do, the DPW director mentioned another pole that need to get moved over off of East Main Street, are we working on that?
What's that again, sir?
The DPW director in his comments mentioned a pole P9 or something that has to get moved off Franklin Road. Do you know anything about that one?
Nope, don't know anything about that.
Different project, this is, the reference by John is to the Leckers Farms.
Exactly, no, I know, that's my point, my point is, is that one making its way ahead as we need it to?
We're working with Bella.
Are we getting the response we need, is what I just want to understand.
Coordination has, we're expecting better coordination between the different entities concerned.
Okay. Is there anything you can do to help us with that, with this pole P9?
This is pole nine and Franklin?
Franklin, yeah, Frank, Frankland Road, yeah.
Frankland, I know what that is.
Yeah.
Okay, when I go back.
There's a pole there that need to get moved to get this, to get this road moving, construction underway, and so he's trying hard to get that moved quickly.
Okay. I can follow up tomorrow, tomorrow I have off, I can follow up on Thursday. Should I call someone here, could I, should I call the town manager, or?
Sure, yeah, however you handle it, I, we'd just be, we'd be thankful if you could try to see if we can move that one forward.
Be glad to.
The double pole on West Elm.
Exactly. And then finally, the thing I want to make is, for the record, we got a letter, an email today from Verizon with two, with details of two returned letters that were sent to abutters, so I just want to make sure we're all aware of that, so they did try to, I reached out to everybody. I got an email this afternoon with a couple of the letters that weren't deliverable, so I just want to make sure that's for the record, that's noted. Okay, with that, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve the pole movement. I move the board approve the joint poll request by Verizon to place poles, wires, cables, and fixtures along Hayden Row Street approximately 200 feet from Grand Street as described in the petition.
Second.
Here we have a motion, second, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, president not voting, that's unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, have a great evening, okay?
Thank you.
Item 11 on the agenda, fire chief hiring process update, action item discussion. The board will receive an update on the progress of the fire chief hiring process. Mr. Kamal, how are you doing?
Three key points. First, I couldn't identify the public incentive, the representative, the public meeting, who will be joining the, have the meeting, we will call that the board appointed Mr. Mosher to be superintendent. We've also been working on identifying a local fire chief to participate in the process. We have not nailed down a name yet. Our challenge here is to balance the individual's knowledge of the region with any perceptions regarding their partiality or impartiality. Secondly, we also have put together a schedule that I shared with the board tonight, thanks to the efforts of the HR department, and that schedule basically identifies the recruitment and selection process, sourcing the candidates, the selection and evaluation hiring, the board of selectmen's involvement in the interview process, and stretches from where we are now to perhaps the first weekend generally, where we may be able to make an appointment.
Okay, Mr. Mosher, since you're the representative, do you want to start with any comments?
No, actually, this, this looks pretty good, there's, it looks like about half a dozen more meetings of the full committee. Yeah, I guess I will make, and so, Mr. Kamal, I'm assuming that you're going to take what we learned from the police chief's playbook, and you're applying that.
Yes.
This process.
Yes, we will, and in fact, in our discussions with Mr. Levinson, he did suggest that we have a quick lunch or coffee with the members of the police chief hiring process to talk about lessons learned.
And that takeaway will be applied in this process, or is reflected in this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Har.
I have no questions at this time.
Mr. Sistari. I see that this is basically assuming that there's going to be a start date right at the beginning of January. Is that going to overlap with the chief's planned retirement date at all?
We're hoping to get some form of overlap, however, at this point, the chief is yet to finalize his retirement date.
But the date was in January, though.
Date has not been identified.
The letter was January TBD, I think.
To be determined, yes.
In January, yeah, yeah.
Sometime in January, but he still has to meet with the, meet his ex-retirement.
Right.
To decide on that date.
Mr. Catino.
Yeah, actually, this is, this is a great layout, it's, I love seeing how tight it is and direct, but my only question is, you know, I remember when we were advertising for some other spots before, and I'm thinking back to the superintendents and the principals and other things for other parts of the town. Is 24 days enough? Is that, was that what we did for the, for the police chief? You know, 24 days to get initial candidates in? I remember when we did that, did we get enough so that we can bring it down to three or four? I don't want to just cap three or four in that 24-day period. You know, we're trying to get to that end date, and we're starting today and just trying to get to that end date. Is that where we, is that we, is there enough fluff in that schedule?
Yeah, for, for this level, as well as considering that this is going to be a New England, New England-wide search, usually three weeks, minimum three weeks does work, but I've seen others also do the four- to six-week announcement.
Okay. This is great, I like the way this is going, I, this is a wonderful sheet to be able to reference. Can we put a box in here or some way of delineating when a task has been accomplished, so going forward, because some of these things overlap a little bit, and to Mr. Catino's point a minute ago, some of these things may, may, you know, go on longer, so can we, in a future iteration, just make sure we mark what's been accomplished? And then this needs to be on the agenda every single meeting, at least, you know, once a month at least, let's say, but I think this is terrific so far.
By the format, it looks like it's from Microsoft Project, so that, that should be in there already, just including it.
Yeah, let's just make sure we track that.
Yeah.
Okay, good, so with that, I think this is terrific, I'm, this is a very nice thing to be able to see. Any last questions, comments about that? Okay, moving on to.
I'm sorry, I do have, I do have another question. I'm just looking at this, we have first-round interviews, and then the committee selects three or four finalists for the Board of Selectmen. And then there's the second round interviews and the assessment center. So are those three or four finalists just presented to us on paper? Are we approving that to move on to the second round? I'm not sure what, what that means.
I think one of the lessons from the police chief hiring process was the need to have an open line of communication between the Board of Selectmen and the selection committee as the process progresses. This is intended to allow for that. It's not necessarily coming to the selectmen for a decision, but rather just keeping you, keeping the board in the loop.
And the assessment center, is that the same, have we decided on an assessment center?
No, we have not decided on the assessment center. Again, this strategy is to have the committee drive the process and then rely on some consultant for guidance as we progress.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hurd. All right, that's that. So let's continue to move ahead because I do think it's important to get that January start date. We, we need to, if it, if it's at all possible to make that date, we have to make that date, I think. Item 12, fiscal year 2015, performance evaluation views and action item. The board will conduct performance evaluations for the town manager and police chief. All right, so one of the more awkward but, but legally mandated obligations every year of the board is to review our direct reports, of which there are three, the town manager, the police chief, and the fire chief. Fire chief's retiring this year, so, so his review's less of an issue, but the board does want to do a review of both the, the police chief and the town manager. And so I think the way I'd like to handle this is to, we'll start with the police chief tonight. I think, chief, if you want to come up, you're welcome to or whatever. I think what I, I'm just going to read the goals and the summary. We'll go to the board for, you've already, you've had a chance to see the review, you both have seen, seen your reviews and be able to comment on them. What I'd like to do is read the summary, go to the board for comments. Chief, come to you for comments, questions, concerns. We'll bang it back and forth and then we'll, we'll hopefully finalize it. Okay? So with that, let's start off here. So this is chief's first review year in the town of Hopkinton. He had, coming into the year, one, two, three, four, five goals. And I'll read them and I'll just read the comments. First goal, begin the department certification accreditation process. That was to be done by end of the year. In fact, all the goals were to be done by end of the fiscal year except for the last one. The measure of success was to report to the board on rationale for this, which was a goal of his, and provide a timeline of milestones of completion. This goal was rated a success. The project has resources assigned and working and is currently in the self-assessment stage. Second goal was to develop and implement community-based prevention programs in collaboration with community partners and other stakeholders, also by end of the year. Measure was development and implementation of programs. This is also rated a success. Examples include, but are not limited to, opioid education informs as well as Narcan policy, national night out crime prevention education, senior scams forum, jail diversions program and grant, multi-community autism parent connection partnership, and Alzheimer's alue program. Chief's third goal was to enhance the school safety programs, safety's protocols and traffic safety for the schools. Also by year end, work with the schools to enhance and build programs around these goals was a measure of success. I think that's a big one. You heard my comments the other night about the middle school traffic pattern, which, which I continue to find absolutely frightening. That's rated a success. Examples include, but are not limited to, incident command training for school personnel, revised panic alarm protocols, enhanced communication via dedicated portable radios, a follow the bus program, and an Alice program, which is active shooter preparedness. Fifth, fourth goal rather, was performance metrics. By the end of this, the last fiscal year, was to detail a system of measures by which the performance efficiency and effectiveness of the department and its individual personnel can be ascertained. This is ranked incomplete. Suffice to say, chief, we need to move that one forward this year, I think. This is a key criteria for the board in general. And then the last one is public safety dispatch by January of this, this, of 2015. The measure of success was to participate in the project and assist the fire chief with identifying the scope of action, identifying the project manager, identifying minimal operational requirements, and identifying efficiency gains. This is ranked a partial success, but the project's still ongoing. The project has seen delays, however, it's nearing final implementation. There's still a great deal of enthusiasm about the benefits it should surprise, it should provide. The project is expected to be live within days or weeks. Underneath that, the, there's a, there's a delineation of strength and strengths and development opportunities, and then a summary, which is what I'll read. The board's happy with the start Chief Lee has gotten off to. Despite not having been at this level of a department prior to joining Hopkinton, the experience he's gotten from larger communities and the leadership qualities and vision he has have helped him immensely. We look forward to the coming year and hope to see both continued strength and growth from the chief. We read the chief's performance for fiscal year 2015 above satisfactory, which of course I would say is quite a remarkable accomplishment for the first year on a job. So that's the summary, chief. Let me go to the board for comments, questions. Start with Mr. Hurd. We, so the, now, so here's what happens. I read the review as it stands. We've all had a chance to see the review. I think the question is, for the board members, do you have comments or questions about the review? Are there items you, you didn't see or want to see or want changed? And then are there any things you'd like to add to the review?
So while I was here when Chief Lee was hired, I quickly moved on for a year and was not here to observe and participate routinely with the chief in the process of, you know, overseeing the police force through his leadership and so forth. So I don't have a lot of input, frankly, at this point. My sense is that we are going in the right direction with the police department, as we have been for many years, I think, prior to Chief Lee's arrival. I think he's continued to move us in the right direction. This is just a gut thing more than anything else, really, in listening to some folks in town. I don't have any specific comments for or against the, the points made there, but I, I'm very comfortable with where we are. We can always improve, all of us, myself certainly included in this process. Here's a town volunteer. But I think that we're on the right path and I appreciate your service to the community.
Thank you. And Mr. Catino, over to you.
Yeah, I, I want to echo Mr. Hurd's comments. You really came up to speed quickly and, you know, well, trial by fire, I came right into the, the marathon 16 months ago. And, you know, it's, it's, it's good to see everything improving now with the dispatch coming together and all of that. It's, it looks good. I, I personally like, like an update on the, on the lieutenant position and all that stuff to, we were looking for some, some background on that, but that's, I think that that's forthcoming. But thank you very much for, for what you're doing. You're doing a great job.
Thank you. Mr. Astari, I should start with you, actually. Sorry.
That's right. Chief.
Why, sir?
First of all, congratulations. And, you know, I, I can't stress how pleased we are with the choice that we made to, to bring you into town and we're happy that you came here. You know, I think that in reviewing, in reviewing your first year, I look and, you know, I think that you, you really started building from the ground up. And too many communities have, I guess, there's more of an aura around the police department of, I guess, society today, they, they, they don't really want to approach police as much. You know, there's not that, that bond between the police department and the people in the community. And probably a lot of that has to do with technology and vehicles and this and that. You know, I mean, we talk about community policing, there's not as much, you know, walking the beat, you know, where, where people would talk to other people before. But you've really come in and I, I think that everybody thought that one of the most difficult things would be for someone from the outside to come into the department and get to know the people in the department and get, get acceptance, gain acceptance. And from what I've seen, you've done that. And you and I have talked and you've, you've sent write-ups on some of the things that you've done. And I think that that's where your success has started this year, and I think it's the foundation of success throughout the community. You've, you've gained the trust. You've also implemented programs and positions for people there to both allow them a growth path and also to benefit the community and to continue that outreach. We had an incident at our house and I can't tell you how nice it was to have somebody follow up, you know, a week later saying, hey, you know, if you'd like, we can have some people come over and talk to you about this, talk to you about that, make sure you're comfortable with this. I don't think it's because I'm on the Board of Selectmen, you know, I got the, the.
Everybody gets the same treatment.
I got the sense that this, this is what happens now in Hopkinton. And it was great to see. So, you know, I, I, I hope that you continue that. You know, the input that I've gotten from other people through the community and different town organizations and within community organizations, they said that, they've told me that the police department has been incredibly forthcoming with, with time and ideas and working together with them for different programs as well. The list of programs that you've put together over the last year is fantastic. And, and I don't think, I don't think that many of them are, you know, incredibly difficult to put together, but it's just knowing, you know, looking for ideas and then taking the time and the energy to implement them. And so we thank you for that as a community. You know, I think that, you know, one of the things that, that we as a board would like to see you work on, and it, and it's in here, is just kind of coming back to us with a lot of the progress and what's going on in the community and communicating some of that. And that's, it's your responsibility, it's also our responsibility. We need to make sure that we get you on our agenda here so that we can have those dialogues.
I look forward to that.
But, but, you know, I think that you've, you've had a fantastic year and, you know, we look forward to several more to come.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mosher.
Chief, I think probably the biggest testament to your ability as chief has come from your own officers. I've heard many, many positive things, both from them and from community members, unsolicited positive comments. Coming in from the outside is probably never the optimal situation. I think you've handled it very well. I think also we recognize that the first, the first year in this situation is kind of a year of housekeeping, understanding the dynamics, understanding the processes we have in place, evaluating, and then kind of determining what your next steps are going to be. So I anticipate the upcoming year to be that, to be a year where it's, it's really key, as, as member Astari just pointed out, to be in communication with the board, let us know what you're working on, if you're achieving those metrics, or if you need, if you need some help or coordinating with the, with the town manager. He has the advantage throughout the review process of working with the board on a daily basis. And I think for any department head, if the opportunity is there and the projects are there, to take advantage of that. So, so this will be the year to set the world on fire.
Okay. Go ahead. Chief, yeah, from my perspective, I couldn't be happier with your first year here. I think this was great. You, I knew when you came in, you were the right guy for the job. Your personality's been terrific. I think the attitude you brought, it's all been said by my colleagues, but because I think it's so important, I want to say it again. I'm thrilled with the, the, just the vision you've set up in the community and the way you've, you've told, you've made it clear you want the police force to act. I think we are, as I said to you when you interviewed, we're a small town, you know, we don't need overseers as a police force, right? We need engaged police force. And I think you've done a great job making that clear. And trust me, I've been attentive. So it's been, it's, it's been a terrific year for you. I'm really happy. However, as Mr. Mosher made clear, it only gets harder from here on out. So over to you. Any questions, comments, thoughts about, about the review, about the year, anything you need from us? Just sort of tell us what you're thinking on both measures, small and large.
Well, I'm extremely grateful for all your comments and, and a lot of the good work that's done, certainly I had a part in leading it, but we, we have a great team here in town with the leadership in town, department heads, we all work well together. And I can't say enough about the police department that I inherited. The men and women of that police department shine every day. Besides these goals and things that are going on, there's a lot of big events that happen to the year with the, with the swatting and handling of the marathon, and they have always stepped up to the plate. They're taking more initiative and I like to see them getting recognized for that, following up on cases and things, things of that nature. And just the other night, our national night out, so it's, you know, headed up by Steve Buckley, two years in a row, a great success, just to show that community involvement makes me proud. It makes me proud to see the men and women out there that represent the police department, engage in the community, and it's just, it's an overwhelming feeling. And I couldn't be happier working in this town. There's so much, so much commitment from the public and there's such a sense of community here. And I certainly hope I'm here for a long time to, to enjoy it and, and continue this work. There, there was one thing that I wanted to mention, it was about working with Norman a little bit more. If I could work with Norman more, I'm going to have to move into his house and he doesn't want that. I snore, he can't afford my grocery bill. Well, I can't say enough of, and I appreciate the comments. And I'm certainly looking forward to, to more dialogue with the Board of Selectmen and keeping it updated on a regular basis. I probably should have took a more, a sort of role in maybe looking for time, getting on the agenda more, but I'm glad to hear that you're looking for that type of feedback and I certainly will look forward to giving it and working ahead with my goals next year with, with all your input. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great. Okay. Does anybody have any other comments about this? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Hurd, you got something?
No, I'm all set, guys.
Okay. So if there's no comments, chair will entertain a motion to approve the chief's performance review as written.
So moved.
And authorize the chair to.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, we have any further discussion on this? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, president not voting, that's unanimous. Chief, congratulations on a terrific first year from housekeeping. So I'll get this signed and get it back to you for the records. I believe in your contract, there's a, there's a pay increase that you're eligible for and so I need to review that, get the data, and the board will discuss that, and I think we'll decide that the next meeting, once I confirm all that. And the second thing is, we are going to need goals from you for the next year to go through. We had the board approve, so if I could ask you to pull those together for the next meeting, I'd like to go through that then.
I'm currently working on, on with the command staff and looking forward for some input as well.
Thanks again, chief. Great year. All right. Now the tough one, onto the town manager. So same as before, let me just read the, the summary and then the goals and then the summary, and then we'll do the same process. So the town manager had three goals this year, three big goals this year. Develop, first was develop and implement a plan to address OPEB liability. All those goals, by the way, were due by the end of the fiscal year, June 30th. The measures of success were to complete the actual value, actuarial valuation of OPEB, develop a plan for public participation and outreach, develop OPEB pre-funding plan to be incorporated in the fiscal 2016 town budget and town meeting process. This goal is ranked a success. Norman worked successfully with the Director of Finance to engage the services of an actuarial consulting firm who presented various funding options and impacts to the board. Further, the written report and materials were also provided and available to the public. The selectmen's preferred strategy was also incorporated in the fiscal year 2016 budget that was approved at town meeting. Second goal was continue to support the Board of Selectmen and staff in finalizing the downtown corridor project, coming back to our undergrounding a minute ago. Measure of success was fall into 25% approval. The goal was to collaborate to recruit members to the Main Street Corridor, collaborate to develop work planned for the committee, and work with the committee to develop Schedule Four and hold public participation forums, and seek funding to bring the design to the 100% design phase. After the 100% design phase, the goal is to ensure the project remains in the tip. This goal, this goal is marked ongoing. The decision was made to postpone the formation of the Main Street Corridor group until Mass DOT completes the 25% review and determines scope. Norman has done an excellent job in thinking outside the box and coming up with ways to fund the design of the downtown corridor project. In large part due to these efforts, there's been no additional cost to the taxpayers in this latest phase. The third goal was to coordinate consolidation of trail network projects and identify funding options in relation thereto. The measure of success was to present options and recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. Success, and I would actually say, this has been a tremendous success. This has been a great success, is what the, what the report says, and the town's trail network is beginning to show more complete vision. Thanks to the hard work of Norman and his team, the funding and land acquisitions are also falling into place to allow us to realize this vision. I do think that was a remarkable success this year. Norman's summary is, is quite short, but to the point. Norman's performance has been clearly outstanding. So with that, let's go start off with Mr. Astari. Any comments, discussion topics, things you want to change?
Yeah, we made it through another year with him, huh?
I've, I've long been a big supporter of Mr. Kamalo. You know, I think that, well, in a conversation earlier with one of the other members of the board, you know, we were talking and they were mentioning that, you know, through the year, there, there may be bumps in the road, little stumbling blocks here and there, but in the end, the final results are what we look at. And Norman has continued to take the town to levels higher than we were at the prior year. And he's, he's done it through an incredible amount of hard work. I know that one of the things that I have tried to work with Norman on since, since the first time I was chair, I guess, three or four years ago, was. since, since the first time I was chair, I guess three or four years ago, was sometimes step, you know, taking the foot off the gas a little bit and taking some vacation time. And, you know, over, over the years, it's been something where, year after year, we find out that Norman only used, you know, one week of vacation or maybe a week and a half. We've all worked with him and we've witnessed the tremendous number of hours that he puts in, especially throughout the budget season, from, you know, January to, you know, right through to town meeting in May. And, you know, he doesn't, he's no slouch the rest of the year either. And, you know, I, not, not for this, not for this review, because it's a new fiscal year, but I was incredibly happy to see that he did take a two-week vacation this year already. So, so he's, he's beginning to, I guess heed some advice and, and learn a little bit about that. But, you know, kind of getting back to, getting back to the review, you know, he always seems to bring us out, bring us through in shining colors. Are there things that he can work on? Certainly, there are things that, there are things that he can work on. And I think that, you know, one of the things that was mentioned in the review here is, you know, not necessarily his fault because I think it was, you know, more of, I'll use the word again tonight, just a confluence of events where we had some turnover this year in Town Hall. And, you know, I think that it's in the review simply because he is in charge of Town Hall. And so at some level, you know, the manager needs to take responsibility for things that happen, even though it's individual choices that, that may result in that. But, you know, I think that he's been, he's been doing great over the years, putting together an incredibly strong team of, of managers around him. And I think that, I trust that he will continue to do that. And I think that Hopkinton is very lucky to have him in the seat that he's in. I look around at the other area towns, and I don't see anybody getting, getting talent at the level that we have in, in this position.
Okay. Thank you for that. Mr. Catino.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very pleased with, with this year. You know, if I can just start with the, with the trails. We're making strides left and right. The, the arts on the trail just last week, a week and a half ago, that I kind of do on crutches, it was delightful for me. But it was great to see. And it was a great effort, the way you're working with, with the Trails Committee to make sure we get these land acquisitions so we can pull that all together. That, that's something that's really gonna help the town in, in so many ways. You know, I really appreciate all you do for us. People forget that we're volunteers. And we try and do the best we can. And I really appreciate how much that you protect us, almost to a fault. And I think that that's part of what, what Mr. Sistari was talking about, that, that you take on so much and take on more that's necessary sometimes to make sure that the, the job gets done. But we're here for you, for you, whenever you need help. And because you've always been there, even when I was Vice Chairman of the Planning Board, you were always there for me, always had an open-door policy. And I, and I really appreciate it. And I really also appreciated that you actually did turn off two weeks ago and really didn't answer your phone. I tested it. I called you, you didn't answer. And that's why I left you that message. Good, you did it. You didn't answer. But so thank you very much for a great year.
Over to Mr. Mosher.
Norman, thanks for the tremendous amount of effort and, and true caring that you put into this town. I think if you want to give yourself a raise, work less hours. Your hourly rate's terrible. But as Chairman Puleko mentioned earlier, or maybe it was Mr. Sistari, that we have to take a look at the results. And the town continues to move forward. Year on year is, continues to be better. We're achieving milestones now. We're actually coming together. Things that were just talked about a few years ago are now, now coming to fruition. That being said, when there are difficulties, I would like to see just, just summaries to the board, a little more, a little more situational awareness to the board so that we can deal with that, or as Mr. Catino pointed out, help you in any way that we can, or work within the community as we were elected to do. But I would just say, keep up the hard work, maybe work a little less, and look forward to another productive year. So thank you.
And over to Mr. Hur.
Similar to Chief Lee in his year, last year, I wasn't here for a lot of this. So some of the particulars in the goals and some of the activities that went forward or went on, I'm not privy to all the details there. In general, I think Mr. Camallo does an excellent job on behalf of the community. You know, I was fortunate to be the chair when we hired Mr. Camallo with my colleagues on the board at that time, I think seven years ago now. We're going into our seventh year, does that sound right? And I think we've done great work since Mr. Camallo arrived. There's more to be done. But I, I find Mr. Camallo's demeanor, his interaction with people, his knowledge of the community, that in particular has grown over the years. And he understands more the nuances of Hopkinton, which is important for the job. But I think in general, how he interacts with people, how he interacts with us, with the board, with myself in particular, anyway, I think is always professional. It's fun. We have a lot of fun dialogue back and forth. And I think that's important in any workplace. And I'd encourage us to continue to create a fun and healthy environment in the building here. Again, I think in terms of specifics of what happened last year, it's hard for me to get into that. I've seen a couple of things happen, very positive things. I think the trail development in the community is second to none. I didn't get a chance to get to art on the trail a week or so back, but I drove by today. I usually run down there before. And I saw the mailbox or whatever it is right out at the front of the trail there. That's, I can't wait to go for a run now. It's really cool. So those kinds of developments, those assets, I think Mr. Camallo does extremely well with. He has a plan in his mind, he has a plan on paper, and he implements. And I think we should continue to do that. We've got a lot more we want to develop. He's always very conscious of the taxpayers' dollars, sometimes to a fault, which is a good fault, by the way. But, you know, he's very frugal with our money. He's very frugal with the taxpayers' money. And I would encourage him to continue to be that way. But we can't be penny wise and pound foolish sometimes, but we can always sort those things out. The only area where I see an opportunity for improvement, and we all have them, as I mentioned to Chief Lee, I have opportunities for improvement in my role as a selectman. He has them in his role as a chief. Other people have them in their roles in town, and you have them in your role as a town manager. I was, I was very concerned about town meeting this year. I don't put that all on the, on the lap or the shoes of, of the town manager here. But I think as a community, with you leading the charge to get ready for town meeting, we've got to, we've got to play a better game. So if you've had six town meetings now, is that correct? You're five and one. Okay, that's pretty good. You've won five games. You're going to the playoffs. But we didn't win that one last year. And I think as a community, as the coach, as the leader, we need to win every game we play. And that one, for whatever reasons, it just kind of fell apart on us a little bit. So that's an area of opportunity to work on. But again, you won the five before that. So I'm sure we can get back to our winning ways with town meeting next year and the years that follow. Other than that, I think he does an excellent job, and I love working with him.
Back to Mr. Mosher.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not gonna belabor the point, but Mr. Hur brought up, brought up a couple of things. I just, I just wanted to mention to Norman that the board asks a lot of you, as you well know, and we expect a lot. But sometimes if, if we're not giving the tools that you need, because we're the ones that enable the tools, we need to know that sooner rather than later. And I guess that would just, just summarize it. I mean, it's up to us to ensure that we prepare him for what we're asking him to do.
And back over to Mrs. Sistari, Ron.
Yeah, you know, and, and to that point, you know, I guess kind of bringing things back to the town meeting and also the point that Mr. Mosher made. First of all, Mr. Hur, Mr. Hur says that the town manager is five and one. But if we go back to the theme of looking at the results and how things ended up turning out, I think that even with this town meeting, that, that was in the W column. I think a lot of good things happened at that meeting. Again, there may have been a rough road on the way there, but in the end, a lot of good things happened. One comment that I wanted to make, though, around that town meeting is, and also on the theme of how hard Mr. Camallo works, is that this year, the board went to bat for Mr. Camallo in trying to get allocation for a new position to help him out and help relieve some of this workload for an assistant town manager. And the town rejected that. I take some of the responsibility for that as being the chairman who was presenting that effort in front of town meeting. I hope that the board will review the workload again this year. And if it feels that it's appropriate, I hope we try to budget for that position again. This year, we saw two additional positions being added to the planning board that essentially equated to being an assistant town, town planner and helping out with the, all the duties that are going on over in the planning area. And that's incredibly important. And I'm not saying that they don't need that. However, as we're adding positions, we've also added positions to the police department to help with the management structure over there. And this is something that we've discussed for several years now. And I know that some people saw meeting minutes and they thought that we just brought it up about a month before town meeting, and all of a sudden we were running with it. But that's not the case. And I think that Mr. Mosher made the point also at town meeting. It's something that we had been discussing for several years. And I think the town needs to be aware of the workload of not only Mr. Camallo, but all the folks under the town organization. And the fact that, yes, the town does have fewer employees in the town government side of the house now than it did when Mr. Camallo started in his position. And so I think we need to be cognizant of how hard people are working and the demands that are being put on them. And we need to give them that support. And so I hope this year, again, if the board reviews the workloads and, and what we're trying to accomplish, if the board feels that it, in order to accomplish that and be reasonable, that we need to bring in another position, I hope that we don't shy away from that.
Thank you for that. Back across to Mr. Hur.
This is where the public review process gets fun. Okay, I'll give you a six and oh. I'll give you six and oh. We won the, you're right, we won the game. We got done, the board got done, the town got done, what it wanted to do at town meeting by and large, minus a couple articles, whatever. But it was a sloppy game, lots of penalty flags, right? Is that a fair statement?
It was a, it was a, it was a rough road.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, six and oh, I'll give you a winning six and oh undefeated record at town meeting. And that's just one piece of the job, by the way. That's why I don't want to focus too much on this. But it was, it was a rough game, it was a rough road. So we want to smooth that out again going forward.
Absolutely.
Because the first five, I thought, were extremely smooth and very well-run, and the results came as we wanted and so forth. So I'll give you that. Thank you for schooling me on his record.
From my perspective, Norman, coming back to the review, focusing narrowly, I liked these three goals very much this year. I thought they were terrific, they were meaningful. One with the financial one, I liked. The OPEB has been something we've talked about for a long time. I was thrilled, we made progress there. The downtown corridor, again, that's a visionary project. It's gonna take a few more years to get going at full speed, but it's making good progress. We're inching our way along. We're talking now about undergrounding, right? We're moving that forward. So that's a great kind of example of your long-term activities, that just sticking with things over time. And then the trails is something where I think we just had a breakthrough this year, quite honestly. We've, we've worked on it for a while, we've had a lot of planning, a lot of contributions, and all of a sudden it just seems like we're, we're in open field running. We got a bunch of land, we've got this kind of trails plan set up, the center trail is phenomenal, right? We got all these things happening. So that's one that I just, I like because it's something we've been inching our way along. And all of a sudden, it felt like we broke through this year and made, made great progress. So what I liked about your goals this year was that I think they're all meaningful to the community and, and, and sort of, and high impact. And I like the fact that in all of them, I think we did a terrific job, making great progress. And, and again, as the, as the person who's on a day-to-day basis, making sure those move forward, I want to, I need to commend you fully for, for making all that happen. Because none of that wouldn't happen if you hadn't been on every single day. So that's the, on the goals. Something back a little more broadly to review, I think part of your problem sometimes is that you make things in town run so exceptionally well that we sometimes feel like perfection is the standard. And I remember we had this, we had this discussion a couple of years ago. Clearly outstanding does not mean infallible.
I remember that discussion.
Right. And so I will frankly say, I think the board's been spoiled. I think a lot of things just sort of run really, really smoothly. And so when I, when I do think that when we have hiccups, like town meeting, when we have some operational challenges that are inevitably going to occur in a, in an entity of this size, I think they become even more dramatically visible because it's so far outside the, the, the boundaries of our typical experience with you. So what I will say is, we have had some challenges in the past year. We have some things we're gonna have to work on this year. That comes with the job. I, I'm utterly comfortable you're capable of dealing with them, and we'll do so terrific, in a terrific fashion. But this is what happens. I mean, some, some years are gonna be better than others, and some years, things are gonna happen. Just because that's, that's what happens, is problems arise, and we're just gonna have to work our way through them. But I, but I continue to believe that in all cases, you make them better much faster than they would be. I don't think they occur as frequently as they might if you weren't controlling this this well. And, and I'm sure whatever we have, we'll make our way through and fix it. So from my perspective, I think a well-earned review, another outstanding year. I couldn't be more pleased to have this next year for us to work on some other good stuff. So with, yes.
You've had a few over the second round.
I didn't know you had one.
Oh, it was by request only.
I don't, I don't go two, I don't go two rounds unless you ask for it.
Okay, I just wanted to, just to, just to reiterate to the public.
Okay, everybody doesn't get two cuts at the apple.
No, just like what you were saying, we, we have, we have been expecting perfection. And what I don't think the public, I don't think what the public understands is, is that he puts in, you know, 12 hours a day sometimes. I just looked over at that, at the Visioning Committee, and how he was so instrumental in helping us come to that vision.
Let me wrap this up. So are you, are you, do you have anything to make a comment on the review?
Yes, well, I just wanted, okay, that, I'm fine then.
Put it that way.
No, no, because the only thing that was killed at town meeting was the assistant town manager. We passed $21 million worth of spending. And we've, and, and we have nine, nine more people in the, in the police department, so four more in the fighting department.
We're off, we're off target now.
But so.
Can I make a comment?
No. Mr. Camallo, over to you. Do you have any comments about your, my God, we'll be here for a night. Do you have any more, do you have any comments on your review?
Yeah. It's, it's certainly, I think, an honor and a privilege to, to serve this community, work with this board. You have been solid business partners, as well as to work alongside my colleagues here at Town Hall, DPW, School Side, Fire Department. All the wonderful things that you've said truly reflect the effort of a lot of people here. I, I am certainly humbled by your, your feedback. As we have always said, here at Town Hall, we appreciate your feedback, we appreciate the community's feedback. One thing that we continue to enjoy, I think, is the wonderful effort, commitment, and expertise provided by boards and committees like yourselves. As I said earlier, you certainly make our, our lives much easier. You make our jobs enjoyable. The high expectations that you set for us, in fact, when I speak with everybody here at Town Hall- everybody here at Town Hall, are the very reasons why we come back every day to work harder. And so, with that, I really want to thank the board for your guidance, for your support, for also your continuous feedback. I know people think that this is the only time you give me feedback. I get your feedback almost every day. I also want to thank the hard, honest efforts by the town staff, as well as the school side. There are many things that we worked on this past year that involved a lot of effort from the school side, and we appreciate that. And most importantly, all the wonderful projects we work on would not be possible without the community's support.
Good. Okay. So, on that note, unless anybody has anything else to say, and I cringe when I offer that up, Chair, entertain a motion to approve the town manager's fiscal year 2015.
Second.
Have a motion and an angry second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, present, not voting. That passes unanimously. Mr. Kamala, also, in executive session earlier this evening, the board reviewed salary data for comparable towns. Actually, that was another one of your accomplishments, although it's this fiscal year, which is helping us pull together a standard set of data. And using that data as a guide, discussed a contractual increase for you based upon the merit. Todd, can I get you here for a minute? And the board voted in executive session to provide you with a 3% salary increase for fiscal year 2016. Can I get the, if it's, can we get a board, can we get a motion and a second to validate that in public session?
I'll make a motion to approve the board increasing the town manager's salary by 3%.
Second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on that topic? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, present, not voting. That's unanimous. So, 3% salary increase for fiscal year 2016 will be reflected as soon as possible. Also, Mr. Kamala, if, for the next meeting, if you could have goals put together that we could review and approve, I'd appreciate it. Okay. So, again, exceptional year for the town manager and for the police chief. Both Mick and the board of selectmen look good, which is all that really matters. Okay. Item 13 on the agenda, Pratt Farm Master Plan Discussion. The board will discuss the process to master plan the Pratt Farm parcel. Mr. Kamala, over to you.
Yes. Let me speak directly to the process. Our recommendation, the staff, is that the board authorize the town manager to put together a charge for this committee, and that charge will be presented at the board of selectmen's next scheduled meeting. And the broad goals of the charging, of the charge will include the following. One, putting together a master plan that will account for all the discussion points that were covered during the negotiations between the town and the Pratt family, as well as some of the suggestions that came from the town meeting discussions. Number two, make sure that this process is participatory, it's inclusive of all town boards that are impacted. And finally, that we come up with a very tight, well-defined schedule for the deliverables.
I'd miss what you said, the last thing there.
Tight schedules, was that specific to appointing, or what were you saying there?
Yeah, tight schedule in terms of the deliverables. You recall that during the preparations for town meeting and during the negotiations, there were certain issues that were identified as points of interest, including the relationship with the Scouts Association, the desire by most of the people who participated in the discussions to see some form of community-based fabric on the parcel. And also, the feedback that we received in terms of whether the parcel could be a part of wider consideration for broadening our water resources in town.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, at town meeting, when we purchased this land, or when we voted to appropriate the funds to purchase the land, do we have any restrictions against this land as to what the town could do with it?
Well, we call that part of the agreement, part of the concept, in fact, a large part, a large driver of the concept, was this agreement we signed with the Scouts in town, boy and girl scouts, and Cub Scouts and Brownies, to allow them to build a house on the property and to use a portion of the property for their own purposes. And in exchange, they're supposed to help the town do trail networks and maintain the property and all those other things. So, there is, there is an agreement with the Scouts to do this mutually collaboratively.
Right. That was the major topic of use that was discussed.
Right.
Nothing else was really discussed, that I recall.
Well, again, this is why we need to master plan it. I mean, I don't want to get ahead of the rest of the board being able to talk, but that's why we need to master plan it, right? Because we need to, because the Scouts have money and, you know, that's burning a hole in their pocket, and they want to get started on a house as quick as they can. So, but what we've always told them is, we think we know where, more or less, where the house needs to go. Remember, I put the little squishy drawings at town meeting? But we need to finalize all that. So, the reason this process has to get moving is because the Scouts are appropriately eager to get started. However, we have other uses we don't want to either exclude by doing that, or at least be cognizant of, like, do we want to do a CSA, do we want to do something else in town? I genuinely, this isn't my specialty, I generally don't know what else we might do with the property, but it seems like we need to get a thoughtful group together to actually have this discussion, including the Scouts. So, Mr. Catino's point is well-taken, that we haven't actually closed the property yet, but that's going to happen. So, the reason this is on the agenda tonight is because we have promised to the Scouts and to the community that we are going to master plan this parcel. And it would seem like a good thing for the board to start moving ahead on getting a group together to do that, in order that the Scouts may not be unnecessarily delayed in getting things started. I had told them they can be using that land for cookouts in the fall, and I'd like to follow up on that.
So, the reason for my question is, and I agree with what you're saying and why we need to get rolling here, there were no restrictions. I'm not advocating that we're going to pave that place over, that's not what I'm saying at all. But that's a piece of land, a great piece of land, in an area of town where we've had some sensitive discussions over the years. And I don't want to start that all over again. So, we should be very clear upfront with our expectations, which are, we want to do a master plan, the Scouts are part of the process, because of that was discussed at town meeting at length. We're wide open to other areas that are other opportunities. We don't need to pave it over, we don't need to develop it, we don't need to do anything, really. But we're open to everything.
Right.
And I think it's very clear that we start out with that understanding, and we're very clear that we're open to listening, but that we're going to be respectful of the land and the area in the community that it sits.
Yeah, to your point, I think the general, right, it's generally agreed that that land is expected to stay primarily in its natural state. This is, we didn't buy this for fields, we didn't buy this for parking lots, we didn't buy this for anything else. It's intended. It wasn't promised, but the sort of implicit understanding was, it's going to be more or less maintained as it is, and ideally have some farming component. And I think you're right. So, there are some things that just pragmatically won't happen, but within the constraints of that, of keeping it more or less natural, what do we do with it, is the question we need to answer.
Right.
Okay. Mr. Moser, I'm sorry I jumped ahead of you, but...
No, that's okay. I think both your and Mr. Hurd's comments reflect thoughts that I've had. We need to be careful that this isn't viewed as a potential extension of the DPW, or of the Fruit Street wastewater treatment plant, or of the Fruit Street Fields. This is a property that has unique features unto itself. It's got sentimental and historical value, and it's got tremendous community value if executed properly. I think because there are so many interests, we have to be very cautious about who we appoint and what the charge of that committee is. And I think if we follow those steps, we'll look back years from now, and the town will be very pleased that we've done what we did, or that what we're going to do.
Okay. You have something, Todd? I thought you, oh, Todd, I didn't go to you.
No questions.
Okay. So, Mr. Kamala, I think what we need here is a charter, right? Outlawed for committee that would incorporate the board of selectmen, I think. Or maybe not, I don't know. But certainly the Scouts and other advocacy groups in the community. Is it the consensus of the board that we'd like to see the town manager pull together some concept of a committee that we can discuss the next meeting?
Well, something like the Fruit Street Committee that we had several years ago. That might work.
Well, I would disagree with that. I would say, I would say that this probably needs a fresh take at things. I would like a member of the board of selectmen to be on the committee. The board's kind of led the charge. Maybe, John, you meant in structure versus...
In structure, right.
Okay, so, if that's the case, then I'm more in agreement, then, in structure versus makeup. But I want to be sure that we can pull in a fresh perspective and get some of these stakeholders for this project, newer stakeholders involved in this project.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd love, and I know, this may be more of a question for you, John, than anything. I don't know, I'd love to find a CSA-type advocate, somebody who can think about that, right? I mean, we probably need to, we probably want to include the Trails Committee, because one of the concepts we discussed was having trails that would connect to Fruit Street. There isn't a great connection to Fruit Street, but there is one. So, there's a pathway there. I mean, we should be, to your point, I think, we should be, think about a novel composition of a committee for an unusual parcel, maybe is the right answer. So, it's Scouts.
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec. I don't know, though. See, I don't know that I think...
I view it as a passive recreational opportunity.
Right.
Parks and Rec is more the fields and, you know, the asset-based...
Well, I don't know.
Activities and recreation.
I think more, the Trails Group would be more of my thought, because the extent you have anything there, you're going to have trails, you're going to kind of...
Well, when we think about the, sorry, when we think about what happened with Fruit Street, we had this big competition, we split it up, and the schools were going to get some, the cemeteries were going to get some, and when we think of what actually ended up it being used for, was not something we had anticipated.
But it was a, sorry, Mr. Chair, it was a two, it was a four asset purchase. Four assets were going in, and they were discussed widely in advance of the purchase of that land. This land purchase was a very passive activity focus, and I think we need to maintain the spirit of that. We don't have a need in town to go pave that over. I keep seeing that expression, because it resonates certainly with some of us, anyway. You know, we don't, we don't have that need. And I don't want to create a need just because we have the land. That's, I guess, my concern here, is that, okay, we've got this land, so let's just go do something with it.
Right.
We don't need to do anything with it.
Amen.
Other than the trails and the Scouts, and maybe some other farming, you know, some other light use. But we didn't buy this land for assets, like we bought the Fruit Street property for wells, for wastewater, for fields, and a school, and a DPW. So, we got three out of the five.
Well, the well was one concept.
The well was...
Yeah, okay, I'm okay with that, because what's a well do, you got a little building in a mill and ours, it's nothing, you know? So, I think we just got to be careful with how we set the expectations for the use of the land.
So, Mr. Kamala, we need to think, so let's, maybe you can go off and ponder this. I mean, I think the consensus, what I'm hearing from the board is passive focus, minimal impact on the land. Remember, part of the selling, the point to the town was the view shed, we want to protect, right? So, whatever we do, should protect that. Clearly, it's going to have to involve the Scouts, probably Trails Committee, if we could find an agricultural entity or something, I'm not even sure what you'd call it, you know, an advocate for CSA, that might be attractive. But...
I have no problem with Parks and Rec participating, but as long as we all participate with the same understanding of what we're trying to do.
But I also want to keep this under control of the board of selectmen, right? I don't want, I don't want this to start flipping over to people. We're not going to flip part of the property to Parks and Rec, and so...
I agree with all these comments, but I also want to caution people that we don't want it to seem like we're picking a committee to come up with the answer that we're defining right now. So, let's, you know, let's, we can kind of set some, we can kind of set, I guess, the vision that we think that town meeting had, but let's let the committee come to their own conclusion.
Right, but I think what we're talking about, Mr. Stari, is the composition of committee probably needs to be somewhat different than we typically do, because it's not going to be...
No, I understand.
Cut chopped up.
Okay.
The problem is, or the concern I have is, it's almost like when we open up the warrant for town meeting, then everybody comes and wants to get in on the act, and they want to get their article. And that's all within the bylaws of the community, that's great. But like, when we get a piece of land, everybody wants to get in and get on, get in on it. And I don't think that's what this land was acquired for.
Well, maybe what we should do, as we think about structure, and we don't have to decide this tonight, but just to put it out there, would be, think about a way that the board of selectmen and the Scouts, who are the two, right, have a level of control over the outcome, right? So, certainly two appointees, maybe we make a larger appointee as well, right? We can sort of, to make sure it goes along the path that we all, that our two groups agreed upon prior to town meeting. So... Okay. Is there enough on that? Anybody else got any thoughts about how to design a charter, what's involved, not to involve? Mr. Kamala, do you have enough to give you ammunition to go off and ponder this and come back with something?
I think we have enough information in that direction from the board.
Okay. Well, yeah, we need to get this moving, though, because the Scouts want, rightfully want to get going. Okay. That's it on that. In the same vein, the next item on the agenda is 14 Hayden Row Parcels Master Plan, another discussion and action item. The board will discuss the process to master plan the town-owned parcels on Hayden Row. So, again, this is the exact same thing.
Same thing.
We bought the two properties, it ties into EMC Park. At the board's meeting, July 29th, we had some discussion of, kind of nailed down the location of the school and all, so there'll be some things we have to work around. But I think the thought process here was that we would look to do a master plan that would start to at least, maybe not delineate uses, but delineate zones for certain parts of town, and start to think about how to tie an EMC to this existing property. Mr. Kamala, you want to take it from there?
Yes. I think in terms of the actual geographic area for the plan, we want to cover EMC Park, we want to cover the remainder of the Irvine property that's not being used for the school, the Tordaro parcel as well. In terms of stated interests at this point, clearly, Park and Rec, because they do have control over EMC. The Trails Committee, they have identified specific interests on the property. School side, I think they will be impacted as the most immediate neighbor. And also, just based on food traffic here at Town Hall, the neighborhood does have an interest in the issues that are coming up regarding these parcels. Board of Selectmen should definitely be involved. I don't, there will be a need also to have a land use component.
Yes, you guys.
And clearly, I think the, yeah, and clearly, the interests of the planning board, the interests of the planning board, I think, should be accounted for as we think through the composition of the committee. In terms of deadlines, I think what I need the board to be aware of, clearly, are the interests of the school, the interests of the Trails Committee. They have some priorities that may be impacted by this.
Okay. Anybody have comments, questions, Mrs. Stari? Mr. Catino? Mr. Moser?
Yeah, I do have a comment. And I don't know how this plan's all going to pan out, obviously, but from the school standpoint, I don't know what our future needs are going to be, but it's obviously an ideal piece of land to continue to expand. And there's, in just a little bit, the topic has come up over how much of that land the school should retain for the project. And I would just say that as we look at that, perhaps we consider non-permanent uses that would afford flexibility, should that come to fruition in the future, or we have some projections that can say the likelihood of the demand for that in the future while we're executing this master plan.
Okay. Mr. Hurd?
I view this land as completely opposite of the Pratt property in terms of why it was purchased and how we should try to move it forward. I think this was a hard asset purchase.
And I would just say that as we look at that, perhaps we consider non-permanent uses that would afford flexibility, should that come to fruition in the future, or we have some projections that can say the likelihood of the demand for that in the future while we're executing this master plan.
Okay. Mr. Hurd?
I view this land as completely opposite of the Pratt property in terms of why it was purchased and how we should try to move it forward. I think this was a hard asset purchase, a purchase for a hard asset development in the school, and ancillary uses around that, and also town uses sort of ancillary to that. So I think this is a different project, and I think it requires a different approach, and I think we should have different expectations for how we're going to develop it. We can't get into that tonight, because I know it's a big can of worms, but I just see this as wholly different than what we just talked about for five minutes about Pratt property.
I don't think we should pave it over.
I'm sorry?
I don't think we should pave this one over.
Uh, no, but it's going to get built over in good chunk of it. So it's a different piece, you know, or pieces.
From my perspective, you both took my points. This is a pragmatic development parcel, so we should have a different composition of a committee, including the planning board, folks like that. And then to Mr. Mosher's point, right, we might as well cross this bridge early. There's going to be a debate about how much we give to the schools versus retain for the town, which doesn't mean we couldn't give to the schools later, but we should, we might as well start having those conversations, because I'm sure there's going to be a bit ass spread on what goes over. And I think the town should, given that the schools don't really have a plan for it, I think the town should retain it pending some further plans.
I mean, just think about fields as an ancillary use to a school, right? So there's all kinds of synergies there, but it just has to take a different approach. And we got to get on it sooner than later, because the school itself is, that's charging ahead.
Yeah, okay. So let's think about a committee, if we can do a charge for them as well, let's have a discussion about that, and let's make it look materially different.
Progestical issue.
Yes.
The board will be assuming responsibility for two grand master plans. Would there be any consideration on the board's part in including, as part of the charge, some delegation of responsibility?
Well, I think, well, I don't know, that's, to the board, my opinion would be, Hayden Row, I think, we're less concerned about tightly controlling it than we are Fruit Street. But I don't know, is there any other, I have an opinion?
I don't have any concerns with the direction we're going in right now.
I don't understand the question.
I think the board's going to be overtasked.
Yeah, and I'm thinking perhaps this is an assignment that could be dedicated to another town board.
Namely?
Don't appear in the boards.
Through the chair.
I'm simply saying, how much visibility we can build into the charge.
I appreciate Mr. Kamal's consideration. If we get to that point, we could certainly reconsider his words, but I think right now the board's been the drivers of these projects from the start. And I think it's important that we maintain the integrity of, I guess, the vision that the board has had going forward. It may be a point where, you know, we're out of the 60,000-foot picture, and we can hand it off if we're overtasked, but for now, I prefer that the board coordinate these efforts.
And I agree. We gave a commitment to the town that we were going to get them to buy these. I think it's our obligation. Okay. All right, so good. So we'll pick those both up at the next meeting and try to get those charters done and get those moving. Next topic, item 15, Commonwealth Community Compact Applications. An action item, the board will consider authorizing the chair of the board and the town manager to submit an application on behalf of the town. Mr. Kamal, you want to cover this?
Yes, this is initiative that was put out by the Becker Administration, allowing the towns and cities of Massachusetts to partner with the administration in moving best practices initiatives forward. We had a preliminary meeting with the Lieutenant Governor, Karen Polito, who outlined the major goals of this initiative. And subsequent to that meeting, the state advertised and published and declared the process open. The process allows for towns to partner with the state in moving forward initiatives and projects that are community-based, grassroots-driven. These are projects that are not necessarily driven by the state, I need to underscore that. There's also no expectation that the towns will be expending a great deal of money towards this effort. It's a voluntary association between the state and the town. Thus, thinking about the best practice opportunities for Hawkington, the following come to mind. Number one, I think the town has done a great job in building public-private partnerships that we can share as a model for other towns and cities in Massachusetts. What comes to mind are the following projects that the town has undertaken over the years. Number one, the partnership that the town built with legacy firms in moving forward the East Hawkington Master Plan. Number two, the partnership that we have built with some of the technology firms here in Hawkington in helping them establish Hawkington as their home base. Carson Point, the chief that we signed, that the board signed with Peck and Elmer. The wonderful relationship that we have had with EMC over the years is another example. And remember, that relationship with EMC also extends to the work that we do on the school side. It also has impacted some of the work that we do relative to technology. Second area of interest would be, in fact, this is another area that we can build into the application. It's the work that we're doing in land conservation. We just went through the investments that were approved at town meeting in land purchases that move forward that agenda. We've also, over the years, signed a significant number of CIR that grow the footprint of open space in town. There is an open space master plan that the town approved, was it early this year or late last year? And we have a standing committee that is part and parcel of the local government institutions in town. And I think a third area of interest is the potential for expanding community-based agriculture in town. Remember, the town has supported and expanded the concept of a farmer's market. I think it's now a thriving enterprise, it's become part and parcel of the fabric of the community. Everybody's looking forward to being at the common on Sundays to attend the farmer's market. We've also, I think it's demonstrated in the board's recent discussion on the Pratt Farm, we're talking about the potential of the CSA. So broadly speaking, again, the request here is for the board to consider authorizing the chair and the town manager to submit an application that potentially could address those three areas as best management practice areas that the town could put forth in this partnership with the state.
Okay. Well, Mr. Mosher?
Quick question, Mr. Chairman. Norman, you mentioned this would be at great cost. Did I hear that right?
At no, it's expected that it would be at no cost.
At no cost.
I thought I heard you saying--
At no cost, yeah.
All right, thank you for clarifying that. I advocate for this. I think it's a good approach to try to formalize the workflow process. It's just kind of like a large-scale project management approach, bring communities in and be more productive. So I'm in favor of it.
Mrs. Sestari?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Hurd?
I think the governor and the lieutenant governor are doing a great job trying to reach out to local communities and forge relationships, and I fully support what we're doing here.
Mr. Catino?
Yeah, it's a tech sandbox for best practices, and I think it's a great thing.
Okay. So if there's no comments, I guess, let's see what we look for. The chair undertook a motion for the board to authorize a chair and town manager to design and submit an application, a Commonwealth Community Compact application on behalf of the town.
Second.
Any further discussion? Any direction you want to give, anything else? No? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, present not voting, that passes unanimously. So we'll get working on that. Okay, next up is an annual obligation, annual committee town appointments. It's an action item. The board will review the expiring terms of respective board and committee members, and will consider appointing individuals for various terms as outlined in the supporting exhibit below. We have a number of exhibits. We have the annual board and committee reappointments list, we have the list of new board and committee appointments, we also have a set of supporting exhibits. As we all know, appointments carry through the end of each fiscal year or until a successor is appointed. So these folks have been okay in their jobs, but we do need to formally reappoint them at some point. Ms. Kamal, any further comments on this?
No further comments, other than to mention that in the past, when the board has gone through these appointments, we've also included the appointment of town council. I wanted to mention this.
Okay. Which is not listed in an automatic list. Okay. Mr. Sestari, start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to thank, you know, all these folks, not only the people on this list, but people who aren't up for renewal or seeking reappointment this year, for their contributions to the town and the community. You know, there's dozens and dozens of people who put in a lot of hours away from their family, away from their jobs, and it's to benefit the community. And the community wouldn't be what it is without their time and effort. That said, this is a long list of people, and I shouldn't even say that it's a long list of people, it's a long list of positions that we're looking at reappointing people, and it's because they're seeking reappointment. And we haven't given any opportunity to open up the position to see if other people are interested as well. And I'm not sure if it's anything that's feasible this year, because we're already into this fiscal year, and I'm sure many, if not all, of these terms have already expired as of July 1 on a technical level. But I think at the very least, in future years, we should come up with some type of a policy whereby the positions that are for, at-large positions that are coming up for renewal, or, you know, that are lapsing in that year, we're able to post them ahead of time so that we can find out if there's interest from other people in the community. Ideally, I would love to see something like this be put up while we're at town meeting, and we have somewhat of a captive audience, so that we can show people all the different positions. Maybe that can be happening, you know, while we're working on rewording some of the articles or things of that nature. But at any rate, trying to bring an awareness to people, and as much as I appreciate people who want to seek their reappointment, I don't think that it should be an automatic thing where, I've been here for three years, I want to do it another three, you know, so, you know, I'm going to be the only one who's applying. That's my thought. And I would love, you know, if the board would consider, and I don't know, again, what the ramifications would be, if we could do that, if we could start this year and say, hey, let's post all of these so that people can see if there's anything they're interested in, and we'll make, you know, we'll go through the regular decision-making process we do for new spots that are open, or new committee members being appointed, and we do that in September, or something like that. But I know that might be more complicated.
Mr. Catino?
Tough one to follow. Yeah, you make some very good points, because it really shouldn't be automatic. It ends up a lot of times being automatic because, you know, in the past, we've had a tough time filling some of these. But I believe with a lot of public awareness, things, you know, people understanding how important it is to be part of a board, they may, we may get some takers. But it's just a big list, it's great to see. I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Hurd?
So I'm not aware of any boards or committees or what have you that we're talking about here this evening that, over the past year, have been problematic for the community. In years past, there's been the occasional flare-up of certain situations, and we've had to make some changes, just because every now and then, change is good. I'm not aware of any that went on last year, and I don't know of any that have lingered for several years now that are still with us. That said, you know, if we're in a pretty good position, I think we need to reappoint to keep everything moving forward. But I like the idea a lot of advertising this at town meeting, even if you just put it up on the sidewalls for, you know, the entire town meeting, so people, as they meander around, can check it out, see if they want to do something else. But if there's no obvious problem today, then, you know, I think we need to go ahead and get something done. If there are some obvious situations, let's talk about those and hold those off, perhaps.
Okay. Mr. Mosher?
Good conversation. I'm just wondering if I could jump the gun from a practical standpoint and make a motion to reappoint Ramires as town council.
So can, would be jumping the gun. Yeah, we jumped the gun. Can I ask you to hold that in advance until we, because we will come--
Certainly, Mr. Chairman.
But do you have any comments on these appointments that were already--
None that are different from my colleagues.
Okay, fine.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to address a comment that Mr. Hurd made, and I just want to, you know, be clear. I don't see that there are any issues with any of the committees. That's not what I was implying.
No, I'm not suggesting that.
This is just from a matter of, you know, inclusion, allowing people to see what's out there, what's available, and making sure that people have a shot at at least presenting their names for positions that are coming due.
Yeah, and my comments had nothing to do with that approach.
I didn't think so.
Mr. Kamal, you have something to say?
If I may, the information that is made public via the county website identifies the kind of vacancies, and also there's a second category, terms that are expiring, and people can select a chain that can identify those positions. But your point is well taken in terms of, they have aggressively advertised the positions that are expiring. We do have that information ready on the website.
Great. From my perspective, I think what we tend to do is collect those names, and then when we have an opening, we'll go to those people. I think Mrs. Sestari's point, which is well taken, which is, every year, we should go to those people and say, okay, we're reappointing, do you want to put your name in the hat to get appointed? And so I think there's a middle ground here, I mean--
That had been a past practice.
Yeah, so I think what we should do, Ms. Kamal, is every single year, if anybody's got their name in, we should go in them and confirm they still want to be considered, and if they are, they should get in the mix, and we should interview.
We will build that concept into generally extend quarterly announcements. We will build that conception--
Okay. But that's how I think next year needs to go. It needs to put a letter out to everybody that says, just what I just said. I mean, right, we're going to, we're looking for a list of interested parties for X committee, and people who are on, you know, may not get preference, but that doesn't, it's not, these aren't syndicates.
Yeah, the only thing I would say is, we need to make sure, you know, we're following whatever rules. If a term expires on July 1st, can we still post it on June 1st, so that, you know, in July, we can hit the ground running?
But again, we could automatically post all of them. We could just blanket post them, I think, and just say, all these terms are expiring, right? But we're not doing a good service to people if they put their name in the list and we just let their name sit on some list until an opening comes up. Those people have a right to be considered in the fiscal year in which they submit their name. I think that's where we're at.
Yeah.
Okay. So with that comment made, and that practice maybe looked at going forward, and some thought about maybe doing something at town meeting, Mr. Mosher, I'll come back to you, because you had a motion.
I'll make a motion, the board will reappoint Ramires as town council.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion on that topic?
Just one comment. I know that at one point, I'm not sure if it was last year or the year before, we were talking about having a more formal review process of town council as well on an annual basis. Is that something that we want to pursue prior to reappointment, or is it something that we want to try to formalize for next year? And I have no problem with Mr. Ramirez, by the way. I will be voting in the affirmative for this whenever it comes up, but--
Do you have any opinion?
I do remember that. I would say, I would say, let's give it the go-ahead for next year so we don't hold up the appointment, just as a practical matter of getting it done, because we're all still free to send any comments that we have.
Okay. Good. Are we, I just want to make sure we're good with that, because it's not on the agenda. He's not listed. Are we going to have a legal problem with doing this?
Can we ask town council, or can we not right now?
So he's not an employee, he's not an employee of the town? He's a contract employee?
Yeah, so we can just do--
So we don't have to have him present--
It's more about not being on the agenda, is what I'm more stressed about.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I guess I would say, I guess I'll take the chance, and I'll say, because it's-- I guess I would say, I guess I'll take the chance, and I'll say, because it's a necessity that the town have a town council. So what, I mean, do you think we need to push it, or do you think we can get away with that? Is there a driving reason we should do this tonight and not have it on the agenda?
Shouldn't be fine if the charter that sits at the home just should be done gradually.
Okay, so we're already late, so what's the hack?
All right, so let's do it, let's do it, let's say we did it because it's, again, it's a necessity for the town, and it was administrative oversight, and then, once we've appointed town council, we can ask him his opinion as to whether we did it in a valid fashion. Good?
And then we can evaluate about that.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, present not voting. Town council is reappointed unanimously. Do we have any other motions?
I move to approve the list, oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Can we come back to that one, because I got Mr. Catino already reading a motion.
Yeah, I move to approve the list of annual board and committee reappointments as printed in the selectman packet.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second, do we have further discussion? No. Okay. Motion, second, no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, present not voting, so that list is done unanimously. Mr. Catino, you want to make another motion?
Yeah, I move to approve the list of new board and committee appointments as printed in the selectman packet.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second, we have further discussion. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, present not voting, that's unanimous as well. We now need to do town labor council, right? Can't say his last name, anybody?
I'll make a motion to appoint Nick Astonopoulos as town labor council. Did I get that right?
Maybe Miracle Connell.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to appoint Miracle Connell as town labor council.
Okay, sort of a motion.
Second.
And Mr. Herr, you have a question?
I don't ever recall us appointing labor council. I thought town council brings in labor council. Are you sure?
You're right, I don't remember doing that either.
I think it's always on a blanket list. He is not hired by Ray.
You just voted off a list, you're saying?
He is not, yeah, it's always been a list. We just blast through it. We just left the list off. We left off lists this year. He's not hired by Tom Thompson, he's hired by us directly. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, present not voting, that's unanimous as well. Anything else we need to do, Mr. Kamal, on that front?
Bless you.
Thank you. Okay. Layers and reports, Mr. Mosher.
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Herr.
Not at this time.
Mr. Sestari. Mr. Catino.
Wow, I already spoke about one, Arts on the Trail. It was a, it was a, it was a great event, it was well-attended. There are still some sculptures and such up. I recommend everybody go in and check it out. It was, it just really enhances our trail network, which brings me to the Trails Network where the final release of the Connolly School Master Plan for the Trails came up. And it's really coming together, and I really encourage people to take a look at it and see what the trail system could become.
Excellent, thank you. My only report was the 300th, and we heard about that earlier at length. Next item, town manager's report, Mr. Kamal.
In fact, through the chair, I believe you already gave a bulk of the update.
Sorry to steal your thunder.
The only thing I want to add is to specifically recognize the efforts of Maria again in the office. She's now literally the project manager.
Okay. Maria, nice job. Well done. All right, future, anything else, Ms. Kamal, in the town manager's report? Future board agenda items, Mr. Herr.
Love to talk about the wave start in the marathon somehow, some way.
Okay. Pre-impertinent.
I mean, a lot of people in town comment on how it gets stretched out, so, at some point. Nothing urgent.
Mr. Catino.
Yeah, I'd like to get an update on the Charter Commission and see how that's coming along. And the second one, I'd like to look into public parking options and what may be able to be purchased or leased, or that we can start discussing that because it's best for growth in the, for the downtown and the whole town at all.
Good stuff. Mr. Mosher.
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Sestari.
Mr. Chairman, you know, over the last few months, I've been spending a lot of time on my bike, and I've been riding through all different towns around Hopkinton. And recently, in the last two to three weeks, I've noticed that it's paving season. And as I'm going through other towns, I'll unexpectedly, all of a sudden, hit some scarified pavement and have to go on a stretch for a quarter mile or a mile, and then hit a bump, come onto some old pavement, and then go on to some more scarified pavement. But I know that in the next couple of weeks, it's all going to be smoothed out, and that's going to be good. I'm not sure if I'm just not going to the right parts of Hopkinton, but I haven't seen us doing any of, any work on our roads yet. And so I would like to have an update from the DPW director that encompasses what roads we planned to work on for the year, what's been completed, what's in progress, and what's coming up so that we can all be in the know.
There has been a noticeable lack of asphalt going down in town this summer.
Yes, but check your inboxes.
Okay.
Mr. Sestari did raise this issue earlier, I think it was yesterday.
Last minute. Yeah, so.
But the response by the GIS team was spectacular. I just forwarded to the board a map depicting the extent of the pavement management program, work planned, work completed, and work pending.
We need a new paverator. One minute ago.
We'll evaluate that one, okay. All right. Challenge and motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, present not voting, that's unanimous. Good night, everybody.